Do you want to put your briefcase right here?
I don't. Hopefully, I don't have to be there for you anymore.
Hopefully not. Well, we're alive now, so.
I would like to stand and get started.
Thank we all pray tonight. Great Creator, you are the verse of. We humbly acknowledge who you are tonight. That is the great I am. Lord, we ask that we, as we look around our country at the turmoil and all the dismay and everything that's going on, we know it's not pleasing upon the V. But, Lord, we know you in control. And we ask you tonight, dear Father, as these men have appointed and into your will, do your will tonight and do what's best for the constituents of this county. Help us to understand, Lord, that you gave your son freely for our salvation, and, Lord, we are so appreciative of that. Again, we say tonight, we love you and we thank you for all that you do and all that you're going to do for this county. Just help us, dear Lord, as we head that direction. All of this, we pray in the most sacred name ever spoken, and that's Jesus, and all of God's children said. Salute, praise, and I pray that the nations through the light of the United States of America and through a republic which stands one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to do a little prayer.
I'd like some more chairs.
All right, we'll go ahead and get started. We'll start with adopting the agenda. Do we have any additions or deletions?
Mr. Chairman, I would like to add under Commissioner's items to brave removal from Northside, Northdale subdivision community.
All right, do we have anything else?
I've got one. We could add EMS.
All right, do we have anything else? Your motion to adopt the agenda?
Same thing.
Got a motion to hear a second? Now, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? How's that?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. All right, we'll go down to adopt previous minutes. This is for recitation October 21st, 2025. Do you have your motion to adopt minutes?
Same thing.
I have a motion forward to hear a second?
Same.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? How's that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. All right, we've got some that want to speak on Dogwood Lakes, and we have that as agenda item. So, if it's all aboard, I'll just move that off one item in the agenda item. All right, we'll go down to Jeremy Rollins, Homestead Creek, Solon.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. My name is Jeremy Rollins. I'm chairman of the Homestead Creek, Solon Water District. We're currently dissolving the board, going through the final audit with F-Dax. And we've got a 2015 F-150 pickup truck with 110,000 miles. We have a 2023 seven-foot grain drill, Motel, that we paid $32,000 for under a cost share with F-Dax. And we're currently, the farmers in the community lease it for $8 an acre. As of right now, it's generated $3,200 in rent. Ms. Cowan has expressed interest with extension to take that drill and be able to lease it out of her office. We've got agreements with F-Dax that donated under a cost share, so it's no cost to the county. We're going to donate the truck also. I'll sign the title over and be the county's. The sheriff's expressed interest in it, and I think, you know, extension half, it'd be up to y'all. So, that's what I want to do tonight.
All right, any questions? Put them forward.
Do you need a motion to accept this, Mr. Chairman?
You can probably make the unbelieveable.
Okay. The only thing with that drill, I think we need to just, if extension office is going to carry that drill, we're probably just going to come up with a line item for all of the rent to come into, so expenses can be paid out. Because I'm sure there's expenses behind that, just machinery to go on.
Well, as of right now, it's brand new. It's not wore out like the other one we had, but this one's a brand new piece of equipment.
My recommendation is to accept that and to create a line item for all rent for expenses needs to be. I don't think we are planning to put that anywhere and then move the truck over to the sheriff's office.
All right, I have a motion forward. Do you have a second motion? I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? How's that?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Thank you, Jeremy.
Mr. Rollins, do you get that title to me?
Yes, sir, I'll do that.
All right, we'll go down to Gary.
I'll wait and see if you're going to talk about it. If you don't talk about it, it's fine.
All right. All right, Mr. Christopher Wilson.
Good evening, Commissioner. It's good to see all y'all tonight. Good to see a fine crowd of folks behind me over here come to meet. Not like the city meeting where you don't have anybody there. We've got a good crowd to come and they speak up, let you know what's on their mind. I just have one item I want to discuss tonight, and I see you've got on the agenda, HCDC Board Reorganization. My question, or my point would be that as we're talking about reorganization of the HCDC, you know, and recently, there was, the chairman was found guilty of sunshine violations, and the board had previously voted to renegotiate a new contract. So, I think this would be a prime time to advertise the chairman's position and take some applications to see if we can get somebody else in there that's not committed sunshine violation. Thank you.
All right, all right, we're going down to the agenda items. Motor grade vanutes, lease, get rid of them. All right, Rick. There we are.
All right, so. For, I was here for the last meeting and, you know, introduced myself and whatnot. I know some of the things is here, but to introduce myself again, I'm Brett Holloman, Thompson Tracker. I'm a new salesman that just moved down recently from Alabama in June. And, you know, obviously, I've been talking to Mr. David and Andy at the shop, and, you know, I was told that y'all's motor grade leases are coming up, and I just wanted to, you know, give you guys an option. I don't know, actually, I talked to Andy yesterday. I know he's out of town, but it sounds like y'all got some numbers from Jamwood, and also got some numbers on what the machines are worth from Dobbs, correct?
On Jamwood, we get prices on the dentures.
You didn't get them from, you didn't get them on the motor grader?
We have them, Mr. Rollins.
Okay. I have them.
Okay, okay. Well, what it seems to me is, it just seemed like the lease program that y'all were offered is not putting you in a fair position right now. And that's one thing that I want to do. Obviously, I want to get you in cat door equipment, but I also want to put the county of Holmes in a better situation five years from now. You know, I don't know if y'all made a decision on what you want to do from here on, you know, for the rest of the year or for the next five years, but that's why I'm here, is to talk a little bit about, you know, doing the lease program with us. And we've got some options, but, you know, first, I want to kind of go over some advantages of going with us, and that'd be dealer support. You're dealing with one dealer. I've got a store up in Dethin, a parts store in Crestview, and then I've got a full-service store in Tamal City as well. It's all under us. Obviously, parts availability with the cat builder network is very good and extensive. Obviously, you get me, but you also get a parts and service support rep that comes by and checks on you and, you know, sees what you need. And then also, something that I included in the deal would be, you know, a thousand hours worth of filters. So, your first two services, you get the filters with this deal. Powertrain hydroics take warranty for the duration of the lease. And then I also include a travel time and mileage coverage for warranty for pairs for the duration of the lease. So, if you got something comes up that's wrong with your machine, you know, our service guys, they come out and work on your machine, that travel time mileage is covered. So, and one of the big things would be resale value. You know, talking with, I actually talked to Brian Wood from JM Wood today, and, you know, obviously, I know about what y'all's machines right now are worth. And I was also told what Dobbs, sorry if I got that mixed up between beer and Dobbs, Dobbs said that they're worth. And it's just, it's not a good situation, and I do know that you do have the opportunity to possibly turn them in as well. And one thing about us is our two lease options, we have predetermined purchase options. So, at the end of the, at the term, you already know what they're going to cost. The one, the one quote that I did bring, because I do feel like with the situation, the way it is, you can see on there, but we have other options. But I did bring that one. And then, you know, just kind of a little overview of the two options that we do have. A CBO lease is basically a usage lease. So, use it for five years, turn it in. And you do have a purchase option on that, but it's a little higher than our other option, if that's what you want to do. The government lease, you can purchase it or take it in option with a JM Wood guarantee and possibly make, you know, anywhere from 20 to 45 grand per machine at the end of the term. And one thing that me and Brian talked about today is that's a pretty seamless transition. Instead of having to go and, you know, get money or take money out of your budget to buy the machine, you haul them up to JM Wood, they sell them, and they pay off that balloon or that purchase option, and then you get the proceeds. So, they send the proceeds to Holmes County. So, that puts you in a better situation for the next machines, for the next term of the lease. Obviously, we got to talk a little bit about the machines themselves. If you look at the quote, which is on your right side of the folder, that is a 140 tandem drive with a ripper. And, you know, talking to Brian today, that's one of the most sought-after motor graders in the market. You know, it brings good money back. And let's just address the elephant in the room. I know y'all are running 672 GPs, which are, you know, all with drive. But I can tell you that the reason why is because their tandem drive machine, which is a 670, which is more apples to apples. A tandem drive machine just won't do what ours does. Ours weighs a little more, it's better balanced, and it'll push a ditch like you want it to. And, you know, if you're worried about that, we can always bring one down here to Demuth and show you, put it in the dirt, show you it'll do it. You know, another issue that I talked with Andy about was they'll had sensors on the cylinders that lift the blades, right? And every time they go and cut a ditch, you go up under a limb, we're knocking sensors off, having to bring service trucks in. Same way with all the drive sensors on the front. You know, it's a big cost, from what Andy told me, over the life of this lease. And, you know, I can tell you this, our sensors for our blade are in the turntable. They're in the frame of the machine. They're hidden away, they're tucked away. They're not going to be knocked off all the time. And we're obviously not going to have all the drive sensors because it's a tandem drive machine. And I believe, one of the main reasons we make an all-the-drive machine is for the Midwest and the North. You know, when you're dealing with snow and ice, that's when they really need them. But with the way our machines are engineered, you're not going to be satisfied with a 140 tandem drive. And then to go over to, you know, a little more about our two products, the government lease, you know, you can do it yearly or monthly payments. And the payments are made in arrears. So, I think that is obviously a good situation for what's going on right now and what you budgeted for, for this year. Because you wouldn't make your first payment on these machines until the spring of 27, when, you know, a year after you take in the new machines. So, you know, kind of similar to the Truck Works deal, we can do it the same way and keep it off this year's budget. Let's see. The government lease, obviously, like I said earlier, there is not an option to return that machine, but with us giving you a predetermined purchase cost on that machine, I believe it was what, $108,000, something like that at the end of the term? That leaves you, that leaves you some room to take that thing to JM Wood, make some money, and put you in a good position for the next go-round. Or it's equity, you know, equity, it's a good price that you wanted to buy one or two of them, right? You know, that interest rate for that government lease is pretty, pretty strong, which is, I think, you know, a good thing. But obviously, if you did want to just use the machines and turn them back in, our CBO lease is a good option as well. And as you can see on the right side of that paper, we've got a lot of neighboring counties in Florida and also up in Alabama that utilize these two products. So, yeah, I mean, I just wanted to come by again, give us an option. Of course, I want to put you guys in cat, but I want you to make a sound decision for the county as well. So, any questions?
Or any questions, Rick?
No. I just want to say this, I appreciate you doing this. I know you've been, you know, putting this together, and I think, I don't know if David told you, but our last meeting, we went ahead and we had one more year left on the warranty on our existing machines through John Deere. I think it charged a 3% increase, so we went ahead and went forward with that for next year. But obviously, the warranty will be running out after this thing budget year. I just want to get this in my mind. So, basically, we're looking at about $5,100, $5,100 a month per unit on this payment plan, is what it's looking at, $61,000 a year, and the purchase price is $349,000 per unit. So, we got currently, and we got eight graders currently.
We got eight.
Eight graders in the Creeds. So, we're looking around, you're going to be looking around $5,000 a month for the lease purchase on these. And currently, I think Andy, I think we went through the budget. I don't, I think we're about half that now with John Deere.
About $3,100.
$3,100. So, it's, and they're great. Caterpillar is awesome. I mean, you talk to the guys, that's what they want. But, you know, that's, I think it was just the board we went that way because of budgetary reasons. It's just we can't do it right now. But unfortunately, next year, we will have to be looking at something like this. And it's going to be one of the major increases in this county budget, makesure equipment, because the lease that we got no longer exists.
Right.
The prices don't longer exist. And even John Deere told us, he was looking at 30% increase next year.
Oh, yeah. It's definitely hung up a lot since, what, 2019, 2020?
Yeah.
But, yeah, I mean, that's another reason I wanted to, you know, give you the option of annual payments in arrears, because that would, obviously, then you could prepare a little better for those payments with the budget.
We're definitely going to have to be looking at this at next budget, at next budget cycle, because it's coming.
Right. Any more questions? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
All right, we go down to the Miss Homs County Pageant Amendment, Amanda Higginson.
Hi, I'm Amanda Higginson here. I'm here in Holmes County, Florida. Approximately one and a half weeks ago, I received an email from the board stating that they'd informed I no longer was the director of the Holmes County Pageant and wanted, in writing, if I still, if I was still the director, I wanted to sit down. I replied to the email letting the board know that I had not sat down and would continue as the director of Holmes County Pageant. I'm here tonight with my co-directors, Vicki Saberson and Kim Sheffield. Kim is the director of the Bonafay Pageant. As you can imagine, as routine, when you participate in, pageants can be expensive. For the past several years, both pageants have participated together as one big pageant for a number of reasons, primarily monetary ones. By having one pageant and else with securing one venue, the cost for sound, insurance, cost of judges in MC. For the girls competing, it will help with them with expenses of hair and makeup, interview outfits, pageant dresses, evening gowns. Lucky we have already reserved venue for 2026 pageant. Since COVID, our pageant has suffered. Girls have to make choices between sports, cheering, dance, and pageants. The committee holds registration at least three times before the night of the pageant. Also, if we have enough participation in Little Miss and Miss divisions, the committee sends these queens to National Peanut Festival Pageant in Dethin, Alabama. Once they participate in the peanut, they are bound by peanut rolls. At this time, the Holmes County Pageant is in good stead with the peanut organization. Last year, Wallace Community College and Troy University presented a scholarship to every Miss Queen who participated in the Peanut Festival Pageant. I have the Wallace Community College flyer that was presented to us if you would like to call me. Our pageant had one participant, and to participate at peanut, they have a three contestant rule. That's not our rule, that's peanuts. Our committee wants to participate at peanut, but if we don't have the number to send our queens, we still would like to have a queen that will represent Holmes County. All the above information about the pageant, the scholarships, et cetera, is provided by social media with phone numbers and email for further questions. Participation in other neighboring parades, ribbon coatings, open houses, and community involvement need to be a group effort. In the past, either the Miss or Little Misses long has contacted the local chamber, giving information so all the upcoming events are related to one person instead of them having to relate it to five to six different people and so on in that same organization. Before I close, the Holmes County Pageant Incorporated name is active on Sundays, Florida. If any of you need a copy, I will give you a copy. Or if you would like to speak with someone at the Peanut Festival office, I can share that information with you as well. In conclusion, I am here in person to let the board know I have not sat down and still continue as the director of the Holmes County Pageant. I would ask that when the peanut board asks us for a letter to send to a Little Miss or a Miss to their pageant, that the board will unanimously vote to write one for myself, Vicki Saberson, and Kim Sheffield for your time.
Right. Thank you, man. All right, or anything of this. I think all we do is write a letter of recommendation.
That's what we do.
Yeah, yeah.
We can all ask this to come back here.
Yeah.
Call somebody else who's here. Tell them this gives the race. We don't need that letter to be there. Is that it? We'll do that for a long time.
My co-director before me, and I have been with her since she does, and I think she is, she's been helping since, um, about five years? And she's saying whether I'm monitoring that well before I was with Holmes County Pageant.
Somebody.
Come forward if you're going to speak, just state your name.
Hey, I'm the one that was here two weeks ago at the last meeting. I'm giving a copy to where they had actually discluded on Sunday in South Florida, the LLC that they had for Holmes County. I didn't know she was still the director or not, but as far as, and I don't want to discredit anything that has gone on, she's had the pageant for a very long time. Both of my girls have went through with her as the director. I just feel like it's time for someone new to have their hands in it, because our numbers are low. We did have a very good option to have scholarships offered to our girls this year, but the calls, they combine the pageants. You get, you have to pay, they don't save the girls any money. Parents, it doesn't save us any money, yeah, in the long run. It's $300 to compete for both. You get one chance to walk, one chance to interview. That's it. And with everything combined, that's how much it costs for a girl to compete for both titles. And you only get one shot. If they were separated like everyone else does it, you would get two shots. And I can say that because years ago, when it was separated, when my youngest competed for Little Miss Bonafay first, her dress was falling apart, her hair fell apart. We had a terrible time. She didn't win. We got a second chance. Two weekends later, she won Little Miss Holmes County and was able to go and compete at peanut because we were able to get a different dress, we had a different hairstyle, so we had a second chance. It's cost the same amount of money now to compete for both titles, but they only get one shot. And I don't think it's fair for the girls. I know it saves them money as far as renting a venue and everything else. I understand that, but I feel like it needs to be its own entity. More girls would be interested if they didn't have to pay for both or if they got two separate pageants and two separate chances, since they are paid to have two separate chances. The scholarship opportunity, that was, it was a wonderful thing, but it was something that was offered through peanut, and fortunately, we didn't get it because we only had one girl there. And that was a lot of, the consensus that I had gotten talking to girls that I know that do pageants was it's unorganized, it's not put together well, and there's no support from the current directors that are there. You don't get any kind of help. You don't get to ride in the rodeo parade together. They're not involved in anything in the community. And I just feel like it's something that they should be. If they're representing the community, it should be, they should be a part of it. They should be a part of the rodeo. Last year, as a matter of fact, I know the Kwan's Club, not last year, a year before rodeo, the Kwan's Club set aside a section for peanut queens. Any of the girls in the area that were going to compete for peanut, they had a section for them. My daughter was Miss Holmes County. We had no idea that this happened. So, it was just terrible communication. Had we known, we would have let all the girls know. They would have enjoyed, they would have loved to come in and go to the rodeo. But because we were not told about this, it's just because there was no communication. So, I just feel like it's time for fresh eyes and fresh hands to kind of be a part of it. I know they've had it for a really long time. Either way, I mean, it's fine, but I just, in my opinion, I feel like it's time for someone new to maybe sit in and take over, and maybe it's something that Holmes County can be proud of.
Mr. Chairman, is it holy to say here that we're only allowed to give one letter of support to one group? Is that what these are?
Well, I don't think I can, you know, the board has no, no place to appoint. This is something that, you know, I don't know once or I don't know how you get to be over it. But all we do is write a letter of recommendation when it comes to that thing.
I guess we just never had multiple.
No, we never have. I don't know.
No, man, it's been doing it for a while. Well, it's kind of a good thing, a good problem to worry about. Everybody wanting to do it.
We do need to sign the letter.
But I do know it's the same thing.
Maybe we should do, with David. I would let David just get with the peanut, give him a damn, give it to the board, see what the LLC, how the other counties do this, multiple people coming up. Like you said, this is all made up. I don't, I mean, what happens if two more people come up? But three more people, I mean, how do you choose? That's my question.
I, I don't think we should count it. We have to choose who, we have to choose whoever's over to write the letter.
Saying, how do we decide that process if there's been multiple people, more than one or two or three or four? How do you, how do you make that determination? I think if David's chance, maybe to reach out to the committee and ask them how the county do this, because this is new to me.
Well, I'm saying it's not, it's not sure what you mean.
I mean, you want to be fair to both of them, because both of them are doing work. I mean, both of them putting a lot of time and effort into it. And I, I don't know. I've never, I mean, this is, I had multiple people do it the time I've been on the board or working the county.
They've come up to us last week. You know, we don't stay on whoever's over. We were out of the way.
Yeah. You want, I guess.
Yes, you can.
As she was saying before about the pageant being combined and stuck together, Walton County being, being combined or together, it's been combined for, I don't know. Yeah. And as far as, I mean, I got all the time, and I, everything of this, and this, like, I know that, but one knows, but obviously, like I said, I've been doing this since two thousand nine, and my co-director, fifty-five, who's, who's been with us, her and, her and I went to court of this. I was my attorney, and they considered this. And we were told by the judge, we'd got to like to do this. And that was the year that, um, her, which was going, was she wasn't even going to be able to compete until we got to go in it because all the court, all this was going on the day the peanut was going on. But they ruled my favor and my home state can beat that year.
Let me see, how do, how do you get the position you got? Is it appointed or voted out through the committee?
No, how, how y'all come into play is whenever all that happened to us with the court system. Not only did it happen to us, it also happened to some of the people in the county. And therefore, the peanut committee decided, don't kill it. You know, the city has to choose for the city, and the county chooses for the county and sends a letter. Because it wasn't just in Cheltenham recently, but something like this happening again. And another, I think in Alabama, where someone else basically was going behind or other person had been kind of back and probably picked a pageant.
Well, at this time, you know, the only thing we can do is write.
And I do have the, we are registered as, as an official organization. We are, we are not, if you would like to have this.
Oh, I think right now, we, we just do the same as we always do, write for the statement until it's changed or, or we say something.
Do we need to ask for a motion? Do we need a motion for that or just?
No, we need a motion there.
Sounds like you do.
Yeah, two, uh. You like a motion? I'll have a motion on board here a second.
Second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? How about?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Thank you for your time.
All right, we're going down next to the board schedule. On that scale, three.
Yeah, you all have to put this in, but you all will get it. Need more time to review it. But if there's any dates you need to change, please get it to me so we can get it on that year's board schedule. It's the same as it's always been, if y'all want to change meeting time. We still have a morning and an evening meeting twice a month, and that's scheduled through December fifteenth.
Are there any changes in the board's, board on the list?
August eighteenth, they're late. Can we use the rest again? We got a.
August the what?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth.
We got a nine o'clock meeting scheduled on that date.
Does the board want to change that?
Probably, yeah. Maybe we should move it to the nineteenth.
Yeah, we just move it to, to the nineteenth.
We'll make that change.
Uh huh.
Everything right, everything good.
Well, that was another question. Um, did we, did we like to do something wrong Thanksgiving? Did we only have, did we move immediately, way ahead or what behind or something? I remember that.
Yeah, because somebody was out of town to me. November seventeenth is kind of like two weeks before Thanksgiving, so we might be all right this year. And it's on coincide with the next item, and I'm asking board to give direction on or allow me to do, but all the meetings look good to me. Except the voting, and you might want to look at, you think we're as far enough away as anybody going out of town for Christmas, that's December fifteenth. Something that, let me tell you what y'all done last year. Y'all only had one meeting because of Christmas.
Yeah, I was going to say that's what we done. We have, probably have to come out to sign the, yeah.
That's it.
About.
Yeah, we only have to have three in my seven.
What was that date, the date?
Uh, August eighteenth, and then we're looking at December fifteenth.
Twenty twenty-five?
Twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
We have to get our schedule in a year.
So let's, let's move the eighteenth to the nineteenth. We, we agree with that, I guess?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, I want to consider November third also that selection they also.
Curious.
Should we only move that to November fourth?
That would be on Wednesday.
Yeah, let's move it to, uh.
All, all of well, I'll be in church that night hopefully.
What about, um? Move it to the, yeah, the second, the ninth.
Okay, the second?
Yeah.
What you want to do about December?
It's a day meeting though.
Have one meeting that month?
Yeah, I, I think that's what we need to do. Do what we thought we done, we done a lot, let's, let's do three.
So we'll just do December first.
All right, we got here a motion to get, there's no change, so here we should approve the board meeting schedule with, with the three changes we made.
Yeah, next February.
Connect.
Next, next February.
Uh, most different. I have a motion on board here a second.
I'll say.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? How about?
Yes, yes.
Yes. I will go down now to the holiday, holiday schedule. Let's have board.
Chairman, if I may, y'all asked us to get up the holiday schedule. Let me tell you what we run into. I make it short, sweet. Y'all understand the governor sometimes closes a court house, but he's sitting by the election or whatever. Uh, and we always run into this problem. Y'all said y'all was going to fix it this year. Uh, and allow me to make that call. If y'all want to do that, I gladly do it. But sometimes on a, a holiday, we have to call a special meeting. And then y'all always approve the, the dates that the governor gives, if he so gives this year. What's y'all's feelings on that? Mr. Corby, do we need to get, would the comp, get the officers to come up with the same schedule?
I'm sorry. I think the board previously approved that if the governor declares a holiday, that you will recognize that as a holiday.
All right, this is Laura. I'm going to approve this holiday schedule with, add to it that the governor approves a holiday. I think that we approved that last year, didn't we?
Yes, sir. You've already put.
David, what's a holiday that we don't get off?
President's Day.
No, no, yeah, it's, we bring it up every year, and I don't know why, is it, like, no, what, what's the holiday?
President's Day, we don't get, President's Day, we don't get.
President's Day.
That's what we have. You guys are closed on President's Day too, aren't you?
Thank you, thank you.
No. There's a holiday in mess that we, everyone's always closed and we're not closed. I can't remember, you brought it up this last year, David, it's like.
All right, did the board on three?
I can't remember.
Uh, I can't.
Look, can we just bring up next week, let me find out the holidays again?
Uh, that's what I wanted. Let's bring them next week. All right, we're going down to the county coordinator bidders.
Okay, I'll make sure we put out, get a question on Barrett Hewitt, Brandon Marshall, thirteen twenty-seven, dash oh-three, zero 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 two one zero. Uh, we had two bidders, and the high bidder, Jane and I opened it, is thirty-four thousand for that lot. And the, and my recommendation is to allow the attorney to fix up a deed, direct fifteen percent in cashier's check. The remainder of the deed furnishes the deed. I think that David is here tonight. You need to, the attorney needs to speak first. But that's what the, I believe.
Can we prepare for the check, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, I actually.
We can write, front letter on that data or that.
He has your deed ready.
Yeah. All right, you are. Your motion to go with that recommendation.
Nate, if you need that, not the panel.
I made motion.
Uh. I have a motion in second to go with that recommendation on the bid. All right, uh, any discussion? How about?
Yes. Yes, yes.
Yes.
Chairman, I say I'm glad it's on the table.
I will go down to the, uh, little, Mr. Wayne, John, did you have anything? Before, uh.
I think he didn't do it up.
Uh, county engineers, uh, do you hear?
Sorry. Yes, go ahead, James. Just tell them what we didn't say. Wanted to give, uh, thank you for work, thank you, Chairman. Wanted to give everybody a quick update. As y'all know, we released the bid for, and received bids for the final portion in S building management of the GUC project. Um, there were several bid responses. And as y'all are likely aware, both Florida statute and the bid documents itself give the county a fair amount of leeway to choose how to handle those responses. And I'll go ahead and defer to, to the county attorney for his legal opinion on what next steps and how to proceed.
Thanks, Jay. I had, I had one of them, okay, you know.
Yeah, go ahead.
We did have four bidders, and what we're recommending as of today, there were some procedural errors in one of the bids, some substantive errors in that remaining two that did conflict with the statutes. And what we're recommending to y'all is reject the bids, do an addendum to give a notice to the four bidders that are out there now. Give an opportunity to cure it within seven days, and next Wednesday by two P M. Have them have a deadline to bring in new bids to correct the issues that we've got with. Um, no, we're not running a foul. We're trying to have a, a light approach for this just because there's a lot of dollars involved in this. So we want to be having a more fair with everyone that put in a bid. So we're not going to re-advertise it. We're just going to send direct notice to the board. Give an extension until this, uh, Wednesday, the twelfth, at two P M, to resubmit their, their bids. And have a selection committee that they'll be again and present y'all the fact that the next available will be. And that's what we're recommending. I think Liberty Park is on board with that too. So I would like that to form a motion, if that's okay.
All right, uh, do we have a motion that we go with the attorney's recommendation on this right here?
So much.
To reject the four bids. I have a motion on board here a second.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion?
Nate, hold. Well, you think the turnaround is going to be at the next?
After we, so at it, represent y'all?
After we go through all this.
If, assuming they all come back to you, uh, next Wednesday, twelfth at two, they don't need, the meet, there'll be the next meet that we can approve it. I, I just need some official air. No, I was going to speak, but.
So, so you feel confident we'll be able to get everything on going in the next meeting? So I know, I think Liberty Park is, and so many, we're looking at a timeframe on some of this stuff.
Next June, twenty twenty-six.
Yeah.
I'll do one special house, buddy.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. All right.
Good evening. Um, excuse me, I have a supplemental agreement number four for John Park Road. Nate, you have that resolution. You want me to read that? I might read that if you have it. I, I can read if you don't mind. Resolution twenty-five, that's twenty-nine. A resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Holmes County, Florida, authorizing the chairman or county administrator of the Board of County Commissioners to enter into the small county outreach program supplemental agreement number four. Uh, what this is, is adding, adding seventy-two hundred dollars to John Park Road to close this project out. Um, they haven't overrun some, some concrete, and so it was necessary that they did this, so they, they had seventy-two hundred dollars.
All right. Do you have a motion to approve this resolution?
Same.
I have a motion on board here a second.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Any discussion? How about?
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
John, John, and why are you up there? What are you going to start mobilization on Bonneville, getting ready? Is that looking pretty soon or?
I should be the third, yeah, I mean, yesterday's when they pushed to start. Have they not moved anything out there? I don't know. They talked reject today.
So they, they stake, have they staked up near where the pavement's going to?
Yep, they did, they have, yep. It's just they got the right of way.
Okay. The right of way?
Yeah.
And we're still in process with the things in the middle?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yep. And I should have something, hopefully by next meeting on that.
Okay. Thanks, Senator.
All right, you got a mailman?
Well, there, just want to give an update on County Route eighty-one pavement project. There were some complaints about the, about the pavement and the sidewalk there in Westfield. And I went and met with Mr. Wilmer and Travis Howell with the holiday, doing the inspection, and we looked at it. And, um, this right here is, I just want to bring y'all this field and history of this. Uh, the, the plan sheets in the back here, eleven by seventeen sheets, this was our design that we submitted for ninety percent to DOT back in April of last year. And as you can see there, we had redesigned this sidewall and pushing it closer to the right of way from the part there all the way to the end of the project. And then, and that email correspondence here on the front is, is where we got comments from DOT that, that DOT couldn't pay for that sidewalk because the SCOP program doesn't pay for sidewalk improvements. And I responded and told them, you know, in, in these emails here, told the, Mr. Maria at DOT that, you know, that we weren't wanting to improve the sidewalk. It was just going to be an issue with the shoulder and the drop off if we left it where it is. They basically said that if we did anything with sidewalk in Holmes County, with board, city. They basically said that if we did anything with sidewalk at Homestead and with Ford City Westfield, we're not gonna pay for it. And it's about twenty-two hundred forty feet of five-foot sidewalk, you know, and at the time, it was gonna cost about a hundred fifty thousand dollars to do that work, so, you know, we took it out of the design. We had processed a, a design exception for a substandard shoulder width, you know, and processed that, the documentation. And, um, we left the widening in the project because of all the truck traffic out there. And so, but after our meeting with Wilmer and, uh, Mr. Stafford, Travis is getting up a cost estimate to send the DOT again and ask them a second time if we can, you know, construct part of that with some of the funds that's left in the project. Uh, if not, if we wanna do anything, anything to it, you know, it'd be the county that have to pay for it, City of Westfield. We, I do have some, some options that we can do there, that's a lot cheaper. And, uh, at the next meeting, I'll bring, have some hard numbers when we get the, the numbers back to the contractor, if we wanna try to change it.
So, you just wanna bring it back to the next meeting?
Yeah, I was just giving y'all update tonight, but at the next meeting, uh, Travis should have some harder numbers. And we'll have some, some harder numbers and some, some options on what to do there, if we wanna do anything.
Will Travis have us an answer from DOT by me, you think?
Oh, hopefully.
Um, is that, that price you, you got, that was for the contractor doing all the work and everything, huh? How much do you think you could save the county down in the house?
Did the?
The, pouring the concrete? Or is it too much you think for them to do?
I mean, it's, it's hard to say. I'm, I'm not, I'd have to get with your, your guys and, and see what, what kinda cost shot it. I have all my experience with this, you know, whatever costs a contractor.
Yeah.
And I can actually give you, you know, the quantities and the, the material estimates, you know, and then your time or whatever.
Twenty-two hundred feet, man.
Yeah, but the, the worst section's only a couple hundred feet, you know, and it, it, uh, that, that hundred fifty was for the entire length of the, the worst sections is not that long, it's only a couple hundred feet.
I mean, a worst case scenario, we could just, looking, buy the concrete, our county guy put it down, that way it goes back halfway east and northwards, you know what I'm saying? But it's nothing.
I mean, in that worst section, me and Travis looked at it, and we, it, it slipped, you know, estimate of around fifteen thousand to let the contractor do it for that short section of sidewalk.
If it ain't concrete, there's gonna be some field work.
Yeah, be some field work and spend some additional saw and some grading. But, uh, we'll, we'll have some hard numbers at the next meeting, hopefully.
Okay, maybe we can just look at the material costs, if they come back and say they can't do it or something, something.
On the, uh, on the pilot infrastructure project, um, moving along, we're, we're having some trouble with our utility contractor getting the wet well fabricated. That's kinda put him behind schedule. Um, but the water is progressing, which we hope to have water for pilot, uh, before Thanksgiving there at the site. And then, um, so we don't, we're not sure yet on the, on the, uh, on the sewer list, basically, 'cause they had problems getting the wet well fabricated. But the road's moving along, you know, we should have it paved before Thanksgiving, and then have the final lid put on it before Christmas.
Your, uh, best guess scenario, when would they do something again?
When I, last time I talked to pilot, you know, they originally won't be pumping, uh, in December, you know? But they've had, they've had a few delays themselves, and they're, told me they're three, kinda three to five weeks behind schedule. So, it may be, you know, the first of the year.
January, February, a few.
Something like that. All the, uh, the last that I had is for the, uh, for the busy bee infrastructure, uh, project. We have a, a pre-bid meeting, uh, next Thursday, and the bid opening is November twenty-fifth. Um, I don't, I think you're aware, I think I've copied y'all's and emails and correspondence with FDOT. They made us change our drainage design at the intersection of Thomas Drive and, and Seventy-Nine. And so that's kinda, uh, added, added some, a wrinkle to it, it's gonna add some additional costs. Uh, looking at adding about a hundred fifty thousand dollars of additional costs to the project for the drainage design that they're, that they're requesting. And I requested additional, if they could help, help, help us out with some additional funds, uh, because of this request that they're making, that they have responded. I, I'm, I'm kinda skeptical that they're gonna give us anything, what does that appeal, and they wanna be opening the bids, but, uh, we're on schedule to open the bids November twenty-fifth.
Oh, is it right here, right?
Yeah, right here. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll go down to all of that hell, please, here.
Uh, I guess first I just wanna follow another one of your last meetings, uh, and answer some of your questions. I did have a chance, yeah, I did have a chance to listen to the meeting, um, and there was just a couple of things I wanted to go over with y'all. The cost estimate that was presented to you last time, it was just a one-page cost estimate. And I think you still have this stuff to be back to, if I remember correctly. But what that is, the top number is basically just if you're gonna buy the material and get it to the site. The second number is if you're gonna buy the material and have it installed. Now, keep in mind, that was, um, I think I got a call on Thursday before a meeting on Tuesday to present this, and all I was asked to do was to present what the concrete, excuse me, what the concrete itself would cost and what the concrete and labor would cost. There are other components to finish this project, so, in order to install this concrete, you can't just dump it in that pipe. You'd have to do something to the ends in order to get it built up so it can sustain that pressure from the concrete that's getting added to it. So, there are other tosses that go into this. I was simply asked to bring this concrete toss and the labor cost together there. So, um, that's what you had there. That's, that's really the only update I have. Uh, I'd be glad to answer any questions y'all have there. It sounds like there were a bunch of questions that, I think Nathan wasn't able to answer last time.
I have more any questions?
Nate, did you get any updated consequence, being the pipe is not a sixty-inch pipe?
I didn't, I researched, uh, I had, I had a chance to go out there and measure it, um, I can tell you pretty quick that it got good.
Just me figuring, it was hitting around eleven thousand instead of twenty-two thousand? I used a hundred feet of foot of a, I think I used forty-two or either forty-eight inch? And then I added twelve foot of sixty on top of it for the riser.
So, it came up more than a hundred fifteen?
No, it came with, yeah, it weighed less, so that figures on a sixty-inch pipe, then that is probably a forty-two, no more than a forty-eight.
Forty-eight inch pipe, is it?
I think it was more like a forty-two, I didn't have a tape measure when I went in there. But, I think that price.
Yeah, it's gonna be about two-thirds of that cost if it's, if it's a forty-eight versus a sixty.
So, you're looking at.
I wanna think it's a forty-two.
Fifteen thousand dollars from the trail?
Uh, yeah, that sounds about right, about eighteen, fifteen. And now that, again, that's just if you get concrete trucks to go on the shelf on site and open that hole, you already got bill credit.
Yeah, and then you still gotta close in the vans, and then you got labor, the labor came to what, about eighteen thousand?
Yeah, and that, that's just, um, that's based on, you know, we call it a concrete plant, uh, that sells flowable field. They told us their best price they could do for this much would be about a hundred eighty dollar a unit.
So, you got forty thousand dollars to fill that hole in, basically, that cover.
Yeah.
Does that include the, the pumpers? I mean, there's no way you're gonna reach it with a truck.
No, you have to get.
You'd have to figure out a way to get in the top of that pipe, or rent a bomb truck if you have to stick it out in the bar.
Do you like the name, their additional bit there?
No, this is just materials, again, this, this is not a bid, this is simply a material cost estimate, um, for one line that, that it's gonna fit. Again, my fear, and, and we don't know this, I haven't been out there in the water, we have surveyed that, um, my suggestion, uh, the contractor's gonna build the siphon, he's gonna do it with a team of divers. Uh, maybe you can utilize that dive team to inspect the end of the pipe that's under the water, uh, to make sure that it can hold up to that concrete. If we know that the, the side that's on the water, if we can protect it, um, and get it built, that's the one I'm most concerned about. The one on the, on the dry side, you can just either knock it in and pour the concrete to it, or build you something, um, you can build it up and fill it with time, fill it up, fill it with time.
This is under the, this is the hundred fifty thousand to do the temporary fix on the, on the lake. Is that, we talking about the, even the divers going in, under that?
Yes, 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 yes.
So, so that would be coming under the hundred, hundred fifty thousand for temporary, if divers are going there to do the temporary fix with the siphon to be done.
Yeah, they'll, they'll already be there.
So, now, maybe you're looking at a fifty, sixty thousand just to fill, just to fix the leak, correct? Is that basically, so, two hundred ten thousand, and that's just a, that's.
And, and in order to fix the leak, you're gonna also have to create a new, uh, place for that water to discharge. So, if you fill that pipe up, that right now is the primary source of discharge.
Oh, you.
It's failing, but what we have to do is where that, the top of that pipe is, we have to go and modify that concrete weir that's, uh, at the, what is it, the east end of the dam?
Yeah.
You have to modify that, so the air will let the discharge go out.
Let me close it up while we got the emergency overflow.
So, you got two, two hundred ten thousand for temporary repair, basically. And you still got the, you got the permanent repair, which you quoted about two hundred fifty thousand for that.
Um, yeah, previously we have quoted two hundred fifty thousand, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, that's a new one, a new quote.
And you should, but you should go say two hundred fifty?
It may be a little cheaper now, um, but part of that is the alternative we came up with, uh, to build a siphon that enables the cost to come down, because you don't have to build copper down around it to repair it.
So, you're back to half a minute in time like we did on the big lake.
But including, I think you do that, including the minor tip of the discharge.
Yeah.
Before we have any questions, John?
Nate, if you feel that path, we have the time to do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's the lake, it's the lake of what, uh, and we have a pre-construction meeting scheduled next week, uh, for that sign of the project. Um, I'll find a meeting contractor out there so we can look at the size.
I'm not in here, but I just wanna throw this out there. If we're gonna spend two hundred thousand on temporary, in permanent, four, five years, you're gonna spend another two hundred fifty thousand, how hard would we just jump to the permanent repair right now, what I'm saying?
Well, so, uh, this isn't a temporary fix, what we're doing now, it is permanent, what, what gets installed will remain in place.
I understand that, but it's still another siphon, so why, if you fix the existing pipe right now and not do all this other stuff and just go to the permanent fix, I'm just asking, what, I, I, I mean, I'm just looking at the numbers. I mean, so, if you're gonna spend this much money now, why not just go to the permanent fix right now, do that?
This is part of the permanent.
So, you would have to go through this process in order?
This is, this is required now or later, and it's gonna remain in place into the future.
Okay.
This is not, this is not a temporary fix, this is phase one of the permanent fix.
This is actually taking place of the gate valve.
That's correct, that gate valve that doesn't work anymore.
But that gate valve still is gonna have to be fixed, is what you.
No, that gate valve is attached to that pipe.
Okay.
This replaces the gate valve, the, the new modification to the, to the emergency discharge structure to lower it a little bit, this portion of it, replaces the pipe, the large pipe that's in there. So, there's two components that work, there's one, it's the low-level control, press the gate valve, the siphon replaces that. And then there's a, the top level control is the failing pipe, and to replace that, to modify that concrete weir on the east end, really.
John, what will follow this up? What, what comes after this if we put this?
Uh, so the next step, once you put the siphon in, you'll have to get a permit. Um, this was, it would be done under like a minor modification of the permit, because it's an emergency repair, uh, and it's replacing a non-functioning apparatus, essentially. The next one, we're changing the type of discharge, um, from a pipe to a burn weir, so that's actually a modification of the ERP permit. So, the next phase requires a, a more scrutinized permit, uh, than this one does. So, that's why we did the phase one first. It was, it was something that was more feasible for the county to do, and it was easier to permit. But it is not, it is not in place of doing permanent fixes, it is just step one of that permanent fix.
Is this already, sorry, is this already a part of what was approved? It's gonna be supposed to, already started happening? Now, there's a little like, the one fifty that was already passed approved?
The one fifty is for the cycle, that's for the phase one repair.
Which is what you just talked.
One feet for that.
And that's starting?
The pre-construction meeting is next week, uh, he ordered materials, I think he said we can take the materials, we can see the materials, and then we should see people out there, first thing after that.
But that's not gonna raise the level of the lake? No, no.
It's gonna stop the lake.
It's a little lake.
Correct. So, there's, there's a lot to this. Um, the big lake, we believe is low compared to historical levels.
Why I see exactly the way.
All right, hang on, just a minute, go ahead, John, go ahead.
I spent a lot of time studying this lake, so.
I've lived it for thirty-five years.
The, the, and I'm not talking about the lake because it's a drought, I'm talking about the lake because of the way that it's designed, okay? Um, in order to get the thing permitted, when it failed last time, there was two permits for this lake. They modified one of the permits whenever they rebuilt. In order to do that, they had to say that all the water was going through that site, which is not real. So, that was able, that was used in order to repair that lake back where it is today. If you were to raise that lake back to the level that it was historically, you would have put all that water through the small lake, which is failing, we all know, and if you put that much more water through there, there's a chance that it would be worse than it is today.
So, we gotta use smaller.
So, you have to do the small lake first, so that you can pick the one back there. And we're going on all the way.
In that second phase of the permitting process, explain that to the board, how hard that's on you, is that in the whole of that?
Um, we've al, we've already done part of the modeling for it, so we know that it'll work. Uh, it's just a matter of what boxes we have to check on the state level. It gives an entire modification to the permit, because we have to, and, and there's an emergency action plan tied to it, so we have to modify that emergency.
Have to modify the what?
The emergency action plan, that's what checks the county of the maintenance entity for the lake, says what the title that they have to prepare.
And you, which pre-construction?
Uh, next Wednesday?
Correct.
Next Wednesday.
All right. You're not having a question?
John, did you take the pre-construction, if you get the contractor and come back with a negotiated press?
Yeah, I haven't talked to him about it yet, uh, I guess a direction first, but, um, Nate, I think we can see if it's something we gotta bid out or not, but I can definitely get some quotes from him to get you an idea. And he'll already be there, so that's for sure.
All right, thank you, John.
All right, and also next Wednesday, we have our pre-construction meeting for Canada one eighty-five, so, a lot of folks are gonna ask about that. We've, uh, got DAT to get us our pre-construction scheduled, so we can have the same day as talk with the lake speaker.
All right, all right, thank you, John. All right, uh, we'll go down to the county attorney.
I was asked to look into a potential MSDU, Four Dogwood Lakes, I don't remember from the last meeting. I know the temperature's changed a lot, there's, there's probably, this happened between the time that I've been looking into it, I'm in Rusty behind me, it's also looking to the procedure aspects of implementing one, whether it was required we put on a referendum about it next year, whether we could just do it, uh, just through a vote. I was also asked to look into the legalities of potentially giving the lake back to the citizens that are out there at Dogwood Lakes as well, uh, or, or not for profit, which we don't have the terms of Dogwood Lakes, so here tonight. So, I'm available answering questions, uh, through, or in MSDU, if that's right, you wanna go, or the legalities of how would we convey that legally, the lake itself out to the citizens who are, who are currently on subservient parcels around the lake, or through a not-for-profit, which is already in business. The French Dogwood Lakes, I believe, that's probably on two thirty. So, there, there's a bunch of little, uh, different avenues we can get in, and something else, of course, you don't have, um, I know that it's a broad, broad, broad task. I don't know what the pleasure the board would be in the temperature as far as the expense that we just heard, the ongoing maintenance down the road. And there's been talk about, uh, the, the infrastructure of the road is one of the one things, but the lake itself, with the problems that have been out there, uh, how y'all wanna handle it, because it is an expensive endeavor. How do y'all handle it? Cause it, it is an expensive endeavor and we don't have a lot of money to pull from right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all might have, since there's a surrounding MSBU or a conveyance. If that's around, then y'all wanna go.
Yeah, I think, Nate, just, this is just one we're talking, my little bit, little bit of question with MSBU. I think the first thing is, and we could just go by the cheap way and just let the Dogwood Lake community sue a petition. I'd like to know who's want it and who's not. And once you do that, I know there's several steps to get to where we wanna go, but we, they may not want those improvements. And if they do want improvements, what improvements do they want, and that's gonna set the rate for what each of them pays. I mean, the, the, of course, may pay more because that's what the benefit gives you, you know? Can be a bit the most for them. And, uh, the most everybody does voluntarily, like in Milwaukee, all of theirs has done voluntarily, they don't push it down the citizens. The, uh, they're actually, they give mental services out of the town of Haci, they come in, do the polling, they, they go through the whole work with the MSBU, but then again, they gotta get funded. So, that's what I mean by the cheap way, is just, we can get the citizens in their own petition out there. And then we know if they not want those improvements, if they do not want the MSBU, let's give it. But if they want the improvements, it's, it's a good thing, I'm telling you, MSBU works great in Milwaukee, Kelly. But the first thing is we got to educate the citizens of what MSBU will do for you and what's gonna happen, you know? It's, uh, but there's a lot of unanswered questions among this community with MSBU. So, there's a lot to it, there's a lot of steps, there's a couple of public meetings, you get them. What I just think, uh, getting everybody educated, we're a big department, I'm not enough that person to educate them. I know, I know there is people, but it's a good thing, if you want, if you want improvements within your community, it's the way to do it. You can borrow money against it, but for thirty years, probably, at least thirty years. So there's a lot in there with MSBU.
What was this?
You got to have a plan, you got to know what, what do they want before you make it, it's, it's a gateway, but I.
Is this something we need to have a, uh, kind of a public hearing with them, but not a public hearing, but just a meeting?
I think if the, if the citizens come up themselves, then a petition, to know, to let us know, if they do want it, they may not want it, if they don't.
You kinda have a specific point that you can tell us.
Hold on, just a minute, hold on, hold on, hold on. And you just wanna say what?
No, I'm, I'm guessing it's just, uh, I'd love to know if they want it first, I don't wanna shit them nothing down the back of the roof, I don't.
All right, is, is that something that Dogwood Lakes community would be, and they, uh, bringing a petition, if they want to say, really, that's the only? Or what you want, what improvements you want?
Ms. Terry?
Come up if you, if you wanna say something, state your name.
I'm Kelly Meany, and I live in Dogwood Lakes, and, uh, my first question is, this is a public lake. I mean, you have people all the time that act their boat ramp and utilize that lake that don't live in Dogwood Lakes. And so, to say that this is just a Dogwood Lakes problem, I think is misleading. And, and, and I have to say one other thing. My taxes, since I moved here in twenty-one, has already increased almost eleven hundred dollars from the time I moved here to twenty-five. So my taxes every year keep steadily growing up. And I'm really not looking forward to having another fix. In our development, we have a lot of people that are on fixed incomes. And if the bottom line and the ultimate goal is to cost us out of our homes, then I think we're going down that path. Not everybody can afford what you're proposing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, that'd be a good point, because you got people going to the boat ramp using their name to get your face blown.
All the time.
And that's the thing that happens within a public.
Well, that, and that's, that's, you're looking at one lake, and that's the issue we made and talked about, you got two lakes there. And a small lake's not being utilized right now by the public, is it?
Yes, it is.
There's, let me restate this, and I wanna speak. The, the small lake is not being utilized to its full capacity because it's not a boat ramp on that lake. And that's the problem with that, there's, there's no boat ramp, there's no boat access to that. Now, the easements, David, you even told me the easements going into the small lake are just easements, they're not in county owned. So I mean, this is, this is the issues we're running into in the small lake, and, and Nate, you had called me and asked me, and that's kind of what started all this, is looking at putting the expense in the small lake, you know, how far do we go with this? And my question to you was, and I sent you an email, how far do we go with this and at what, at what point does it, do we stop, at what point do we don't? And, and, you know, you looked into that and came back with some of these ideas. I don't know, because you don't have, back in the day, there was a boat ramp access into that small lake, many, many years ago, but I'm told, but it's no longer there, I don't know what happened. Uh, so, um.
You could, you could grow some little lakes.
And, and now, you know, you don't have that access no more into that small lake. Um, I, I don't know, I, I mean, these are all these questions I asked you, proposed to you, and that's one reason why all this was being talked about. But I know this, I know this for a fact, being on this board since two thousand and sixteen and watching things going up. How it's gonna produce one point, two million dollars extra into the county revenue, and we're looking at a quarter of a million dollars a year just in graders next year. You're looking at, I mean, the increase for next year, there, there won't be no money in the county budget next year extra. I mean, we polled and polled for the last year to budget a hundred fifty thousand on temporary repairs in order to make that other hundred fifty thousand dollar project and not even get into the big lake, you're looking at two, three years before we even get down that. I don't know how financially you're gonna have the money. I mean, I don't know how the board's gonna pull together that kind of money to fix that. And that was my concern, I mean, if the residents are happy where it is and don't wanna spend the money and leave it like it is, so be it.
Hold on, hold on, if you're gonna speak, come to the podium, please just state your name.
I mean, when there's no money, there's no money.
Hold on, if you're gonna speak, come to this podium and state your name.
Maybe I'll do then. Uh, so my question would be, is that question of conveyance gonna be for both parcels, being as they are technically separated into two parcels of four pieces of land?
I come back with that, I'm sorry.
And we're wanting to feed back from the Dogwood Lakes residents and people who also utilize that property as to what to do with it. Are we doing that in consideration of both parcels that the county owns, if they are separate parcels?
There's actually three parcels in there, there's another large parcel behind Mear Lane, I mean, it's on by the county, I think with thirty, forty acres in there. There's several, several acres of land in there. And like Wilmer was saying, the chef was saying, there's a lot to this MSBU, you just don't get them saying, I wanna do an MSBU. I mean, there's, there's a, there's a six-month plan on how you do this, I mean, what parcels do you include? And, uh, there's people that call me, and they're like, well, how would this work for me? Cause I live on Mear Lane, which is not paid, I'm not getting the same benefit as everybody else on the pay, do I pay the same amount or not? And, and those are very valuable questions, and I think we had somebody from the community go around and kind of poll everybody, oh, here, here. Oh, yeah, she had went around and every house that she went to, the people called me, so-and-so was here, they come and asked me about this. I like the idea, but let me ask you this, I'll pay into it, but where's the money going, how's the money being utilized? See, and all those questions haven't been answered yet, and how those parcels are broke down and where that money goes, it's gonna have to, you know, it's hard for this board to sit up here and say, okay, now we got MSBU money, we're gonna use it on this and this. I think it should go back to the community and for them to make a decision with the MSBU board to come back.
Is there a way to do a public hearing like in Lake Cassie so that we can better understand us lake owners and?
Well, that was my suggestion, that was gonna be my suggestion to the chairman, is to come back with, with a public meeting and that, and have a public workshop on this. And lay out, and have Nate bring in on all the possibilities, and what we can and can't do, and what would be spent. My only concern is we are, everybody, I know there's not a person that lives out there, including myself. I mean, we all want it fixed, but I mean, we all want that gone back to its natural state, I do. But the, I know from sitting up here for the last nine years, the money is not there, it's just not, the county does not have the records. We're the second force county in the state of Florida, and I have tried and tried to look at this, I've run in water management here a couple months ago, a couple weeks, uh, maybe a month ago, talked to them, trying to find funding, and there's no, there, there's just no money, there's no funding, we're in a small lake right now. And there's so many obstacles we're trying to get around, and Nate, I mean, you have them, you can lay them out, I mean, there's, there's several more obstacles that he pulled up. We found out something to do with the excesses of the deed, I, I, Nate, you can go into that, I don't know, something to do with the lakes and stuff. There's a lot of things, other things that have to be worked out in order to move forward with this, you know?
Go ahead, man.
You know, we're dealing with the lake issue, and then you're dealing with the infrastructure issue out there, I, I think those are two separate issues. The plant, uh, again, we did a permanent title search. It, it wasn't the deed, it was actually the plant itself, when that, when the, when the lots out there were subdivided, it was never formally dedicated to the county. Um, now, over the years, it was assumed, uh, with improvements, yes. So I, I, um, the lake is what's in front of us now, and, and we've got the budgeted amount of things, a hundred fifty thousand.
At least fifty-five.
One fifty-five, so. How can we set the dog, the firm of Dogwood Lakes, the citizens of Dogwood Lakes fessed up for success, and let them deal with control of their own property that I use their own, where they put a gate up there every day? Um, it's a non-movable lake, I believe it's a man-made lake, I'm, I'm not sure who.
It's man-made.
Man-made, so.
It's agriculture.
It's man-made, so.
Well, and that goes back to the original problem on the big lake, we nev-, never been permitted. So, you know, and to go back and fix that riser and fix everything, I had a good talk with Mr. Smith today, and talking to him about that, and explaining to him kind of what happened there, I mean, it was never permitted, so the permits they threw out was a permit they thought that was seat fit. And now the riser apparently ain't high, so that needs to go back and be looked at too, because after I went back with Mr. Law and looked at all that, with, you know, there was no permits they ever issued to build that lake back in the day.
Back in sixty-two, but we got the permits.
I hope, excuse me, come, come.
Let me teach you through your list, cause everybody, everybody who wants to talk is on your list.
Yes, and I, I, we will say to the people, you wanna come to the podium and, uh, speak, yes, ma'am, we will, anybody that wants to, we hear right now.
Gentlemen, thank you for that opportunity to speak. Um, we've been told that there are three hundred and seventeen properties in Dogwood Lakes. Um, unless there are other roads that, um, are not reported, as of today, um, there are a hundred and ninety-five. These were on Sherwood, Marion, Robin Hood, County Club, um, Bureau, West Nottingham, Little John, Fairway Drive, and Olive, and Remington Place, for the Holmes County, um, Tax Collector's Office. We've been told repeatedly that Dogwood Lakes residents only pay sixty to eighty thousand dollars in taxes each year. Actually, well, we've been told that because of that, an MSBU is required to fund down repairs and other projects. Actually, um, according to the Holmes County Tax Collector's Office, um, in two thousand and twenty-four, they collected two hundred and six thousand dollars, two hundred and six thousand, nine hundred and four dollars. I pulled up every single residence, every single lot, um, I pulled up each one and looked at each one and, um, compiled the data in the last two days, and added it up. Um, and I added up what they actually paid, not what they were charged. This is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars more than what was reported by the county commissioners. Certainly, this is enough to fund the four, well, more than forty thousand dollars short payment to repair the dam this time. We have questions regarding the MSBU, what percentage would be assessed by the Tax Commissioner's Office? What percentage would be assessed by the VOCC for administrative fees? What additional fees and costs would be involved? How many years would the MSBU be collecting? As Dogwood Lakes residents generate almost two hundred and seven thousand dollars each year in tax revenue, this is a hundred and twenty-seven thousand more than previously known, would adding an additional MSBU truly be a fair proportionate of the tax burden for these a hundred and seventy-five property owners and taxpayers of Holmes County? Thank you.
I'm sorry, is that the name? First I'd like to give you a handout. Can I have? I have questions right now. Okay. First, to be fair to the audience. I'm sorry, can you hear me now? How do you turn it up? I'm sorry, is that better?
Yes.
That's clear.
Okay, so for the people behind me, this is just a picture of a lot that we own. This is a photograph of what has turned into a puddle, it's not a lake anymore, okay? This is a photograph of a giant piece of rusted-out steel with a sign up that says, "Keep off." Now, you can see how close that is to the edge, okay? You can see how close this is to the edge. If a child, which they do, swam in this lake and gets caught up on any of this old rusted-out, that's a concern right there. Another concern is this bridge here, which we used to take our, sorry, which we used to take our canoe in as we were fishing. And we would go from the small lake to the big lake. There used to be a way through, now there's nothing but trees and bushes and debris. I also have a lot more photos on my phone, but I'm not gonna take up time with that. There's tires, there is plastic. The other day I went out there and I had to clean up someone else's paper plates, I don't even use paper plates, and I'm not a garbage collector. This isn't fair for homeowners of Dogwood Lakes. Especially when you have people coming from other places that are using the lake, it is a public lake. And it's been my understanding, please correct me if I'm wrong, but it has always been my understanding, and I've lived here for over thirty years in the same spot, that the county was responsible for the lake.
Incorrect.
Incorrect.
No.
Incorrect, you say, okay, so, could you please?
Yeah, Nate, can you, can you refer to those dates when the county assumed responsibility?
I don't have the date, you don't, no, ma'am, I don't, I don't.
It was eighty-three.
Eighty-three? I'll have to verify that. I'll have the date.
Yeah. And that's what he was saying. When the county took it over, say that again, what you were saying about the deeds.
Well, there's, there's two separate issues. You have the plat issue, and you've got the, a deed issue apparently when the county received the lake.
That was never done correctly, is what you said?
On, on the plat, yes. It was never formally dedicated to the county.
So, it wasn't formally dedicated to the county when it was done back in the day?
So, that means what to us homeowners and taxpayers that lived at Dogwood Lakes?
Well, that's what we're trying to determine. What, I mean, that's what we've been talking about at the last meeting and this meeting is, you know, there's, there's this bridge right here, Dave, that I walked away, but Nate, this is the bridge that, that we're talking about. So, yeah, all what you're saying right here, Lord, you're one hundred percent spot on. And this is the conversation I had with him today. We go into this now, we need to go in at full force and we need to fix all this because this bridge is a liability because it's covered, it's on county property.
Exactly.
Yeah.
That's, that's the bridge that all the golf courses.
Exactly.
All the golf carts go on.
And Nate, Nate had that discussion today. I mean, and that's, 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 that's a big issue.
I have a few more questions. One is, how many roads do you maintain in Dogwood Lakes? You maintain all of them?
Mm-hmm.
So, when was the last time a road was paved in Dogwood Lakes?
Well, the patch, the patch payment was done last year. They exit, I mean, we spent thirty thousand dollars on the exit, just going out of Dogwood Lakes, what's twenty thousand dollars of curbing government. I can't remember the exact dollars.
Have you ever ridden a bicycle around Dogwood Lakes?
Yeah, I do, I, I, yeah, quite frequently.
Really?
Yeah.
Safely?
Well, I mean, I can get around it. I mean, you can't go down one seventy-seven eight safely either anymore. I mean, you gotta use common sense. But I, I, yeah, I go around it. Yeah, I, what you're saying, I totally agree with you a hundred percent. That whole area needs to be, it needs repaving and it's done. I'm not disagreeing with you that. I agree with all that. I mean, the Marion Drive needs to be paved. Mirror Lane needs something done with it. I mean, it, it's, we have, we have milled that thing where you can't mill it no more. I mean, there's all kinds of issues with that. It needs to be done. But I'm also saying this, we gotta have money to do it.
Okay. Um, I want to bring up Lake Cassidy because you just spent three hundred thousand dollars.
I just funded nothing on Lake Cassidy.
Well, this board gave.
No more deed.
Okay. For Lake Cassidy, and they have zero residents. So, you're not pulling money, you're not pulling tax dollars from anyone that lives at Lake Cassidy, aren't you? You are?
No.
Oh, okay. Zero dollars? Okay. And how much was that?
Two hundred and six.
Two hundred and six thousand dollars a year from the residents of Dogwood Lakes? And you don't think that we deserve anything?
Well, Dogwood Lakes got three quarters of a million dollars in the last six years. I mean, they have got something. We have got something. When I say we, I mean, me included.
But this two hundred and seventy thousand is every year? Every year.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, she just said we didn't get anything. I mean, yes, money has went into that lake. Over seven hundred thousand went into that lake in the last six years.
Wasn't even permitted and done correctly.
Oh, it was permitted when we done it. Yeah.
But it was two foot lower than it's supposed to be.
Because it was never permitted originally.
Okay, I have, um, two more things. One thing is, as an observer, as a taxpayer, as a Holmes County resident, I watch these meetings online and I hear a lot of, well, I think this and I think that. And that's the way we've always done it. And you know, that's the way we've always done it has gotten us where we are right now. Um, my question is, how many county commissioners are willing to take county commissioner course to better serve every citizen of Holmes County, not just Dogwood Lakes? Every citizen of Holmes County?
I would.
You would?
Make it better.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I'm always up for that.
Well, I have, and you know I have.
I, I know that you have. Would you, sir?
I completely.
You would?
Sure would. I have asked you, of course.
You've had for this?
I have, I, let me, let me just say something. And, and I'm not interrupting you, but I want to say this. This county has set this time and went through a budget. We have a budget committee. We cut workers, we cut part-time positions, we cut everything we could, the worst year that we've ever had to cut. But as this board, this board has tried every way it can to spread the money, try to keep everything working. So, you know, I know sometime we do things that's not right for the county, that's not the y'all make right. But we sit up here and we see these budgets, we feel these budgets, you know, uh, we can't, we're, we're having trouble hiring people right now because this county can't afford what other counties pay. So, yes, we, we might do something that, that looks wrong, that looks like we're doing something, uh, that we should by spending money. But we try to, to take this money and we spread it over five districts, over the whole county. Sometimes we have to do things, cuts, stuff that we don't want to make. And we'd love to help everybody in here out. We'd love to help. I mean, then we'd like to do, you know, we'd like to just take care of Dogwood Lakes right now. We, I wish we had the money, but we don't. But we do what we can. And, and I just want to say that, not interrupting you, and I'm sorry, but I just want to say that. And go ahead, what you're saying.
I, I was just wanting to understand if every county commissioner is willing to take county commissioner course and do better for the community as a whole, not just Dogwood Lakes, Holmes County.
Yes, ma'am.
Because hearing, this is just for myself, hearing, well, I think this and I think that, doesn't sound to me like a sound decision. It sounds like, well, I don't know. So, let's do this and see where it lands. And to me, that's not fair to anybody that lives in Holmes County. Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Chairman, you go.
I took a picture this morning, um, dogs at, uh, completely out of water now. Just sort of built kind of a visual, I mean, I don't really go out there very often, but, um, this is our next one, maybe. Look how far out of water it is when it's off. It's like, dogs. I'm sorry, I don't know what you're feeling right now. How, how, um, how depleted the lake is. Um, now, we're talking about the original three quarters of a million dollars that you spent on the lake, which we're aware of. Clint always reminds us of how much money has been spent on that lake. The money that was spent on that lake didn't do us any good because, can't, didn't do, the money that was spent on the lake didn't do us any good because. Because of the mismeasurement. And so, the lake started out being two feet low. And we've, we discovered the mismeasurement, gosh, it took us about a year and a half, I think, of pleading with y'all to understand that the drop in the riser was two feet too low. Clint was there the day that we realized it was too low. Uh, Don was there that day. Susan Kirby was there. I was there. Jerome was there. Uh, and we realized that indeed a measurement error had taken place during the engineering. And when I talked to Clint about maybe attaching the, um, insurance for the engineer company to make them repair the error, you said that the engineer had done the work for free so that he could get the management job. So, that we couldn't attach, not workers' comp, but we couldn't attach his company's insurance because he had done the job for free. So, I said, well, maybe we should just sue then. And you said, no, you don't want to sue because if you get the lawyers involved, it'll be five years before anything happens.
Where they now?
Where they now. Five years now. So, it's, it's, it's so discouraging to feel like, I would be actually in favor of an MSBU, um, if indeed the county was delivering to the citizens of Dogwood Lakes a lake that was healthy and some roads that had been taken care of in the last five years, and that it was kind of a community that had seen some maintenance. And that is not the case because we are such a poor county. And I hear you when you say that you look at the budget and you try and figure out what to do. In my opinion, that means that every, every one of you guys should be trying to get business in this community. That's the only way we're going to raise our tax base. And you should be, every one of you should be best friends with the Economic Development Committee. They are the ones who are going to, who are going to bring business in and raise us out of poverty. I just feel like we're in poverty. And I don't want to be in poverty. I want, I want our lake to be back. And I want, I, and I pay for schools. I don't have children, but I pay for schools. I pay for hospital. I pay for all this kind of stuff. I'm tired of people saying, oh, and somehow you don't deserve Dogwood Lakes because, you know, we don't live there. Well, that's, that's not how it works with taxes. Um, the dogwood risers, I did a little bit of reading today on the eighty-three document on why it got turned over from, um, all of the homeowners association to the county. And one of the caveat, caveats in that was that, um, the dogwood risers were supposed to be maintained and replaced every twenty years. And how old are they?
They're not something.
Yeah. They're, they're not, they're not twenty years old. So, anyway, thank you for your time. I know you understand why we're so frustrated.
Ms. Roberts.
Yeah.
The, uh, you do know the two-foot era was done on purpose, right?
The what?
By the engineer.
Why?
Well, because he couldn't, as John was explaining earlier, you can't, he could not permit to bring that lake back up to be full level and put that much pressure on the, that damn dam down below it. That's the reason he had to.
Because he only permitted the big dam. He didn't, he didn't take any work into consideration.
He left it two foot low on purpose. But once we get the bottom dam repaired, then you can go back and add ten more foot to it.
That is interesting to hear because on that day that Don and myself and Clint were out there, um.
The little lake was.
The engineer, the engineer was surprised that it was two feet low because he had made a bet with a guy that he would bet a hundred dollars that he was right and the lake was at the correct level. And then when he found out it wasn't, he didn't pay the hundred-dollar bet and he didn't say he did anything wrong.
That's what John was just explaining to us. That's the reason it is two foot low. It threw the perging. They had to do it that way. Yes, ma'am.
Is Jason still here? I saw Jason Powell. There he is. This is the man that built it. This is the man that took the paper. We want to hear from the horses now. There he is right here. Come to the mic, please. We all want to hear what you guys say. It's engineer that's.
Like, an engineer that's, I have no clue on that. But I do know that over the years, when that dam was originally built, it was not permitted. So, therefore, there was no studies, no regulations, no nothing to decide how wide the dam had to be to hold that much head pressure. And it was just built. And it held over the years. But after the studies were done and when it failed and then when we redone it, then to my understanding, between the engineer and the court of engineers, the armed court of engineers, they decided what the level had to be based on the width of the dam and the difference in the watershed from surrounding properties over the years. That was my understanding of how all that went. Now, when we built the new structure, we did miss our mark. We missed it by about that much.
But John D. did a new, John D. did a new engineering report and took into consideration the small lake and said.
I don't know. I ain't got a clue since, since we finished our work. But yeah, we, we were well within tolerance of what we, but yeah, we missed it, I think, a tenth. Not a tenth, though.
That's not the problem.
But anyway, but not, not a tenth of an inch, a hundredth of an inch, uh, which is, you know, about so, or a hundredth of a foot, a hundredth of an inch, if I get it right. But anyway, but yeah, so what's happened after that, I hadn't got a clue. But yes, we did, we, we hit all of our marks in building and constructing. Nothing, nothing went wrong with, had any problem. Uh, and everything was bad. Pass, plant, perjury.
I just want you to know, I didn't do that bad, I didn't think this was booked up. If any book in here was, our dam built, this is the guy to do it. It's not the guy.
Well, if you don't give them, y'all can fix my dam over across the river.
Hey, good evening. Heather Shelby. Um, so I kind of want to bring it back a little bit to kind of how we even got here for this evening. So, Clint, you recuse yourself, and we've talked about this and I talked to Mitch D., you recuse yourself from voting on matters with Dogwood Lakes, even though that is inappropriate because the voting issues affect the entire community and it's not just your property or Mitch's son's property. However, now we're seeing agenda items surfacing under attorney's items, portions of the agenda. And so, you're kind of affecting and influencing policy without voting on it publicly. This creates a perception that decisions, especially those involving potential tax increases to us as the community, um, it's, you're actually advancing that without transparency. So, my ask is, is to make sure that anything on this agenda is above, above board. It's not kidding or surfacing under county attorney for him to bring it up. Because you will bring it up, but you won't vote on it and either will Mitch.
Well, I can vote on this.
Why? How, how can you vote on this when you recuse yourself from everything else?
Now, can you explain that?
Hold on, hold on. Before you, before you do, I have looked this up. The Florida's voting conflict rule, state statute one-one-two-point-three-one-four-three, if the action of this government benefits a large class of people of property owners in roughly the same way, it's not a special gain. The Ethics Commission has said many times, a commissioner can vote when he effect, when the effect is broadly shared and not uniquely theirs. So.
It's a neat thing, Mike. Nate, can you explain that?
Well, a portion of your land does affect the old canal too.
Yeah, I'm fine.
That's another layer that, um, and we were basically, my decision, more of a conservative approach. Michelle, again, you know, there's a Bay County issue where it was similar to the facts where there were votes that were made and property value increased on the commissioner's property. And we were kind of, we were taking the approach of a conservative, we were just trying to keep them out of trouble.
Because of my ownership in the canal that affects both lakes. Now.
We can't do anything.
Do what now?
You can't have both, though. So, then he can't make the suggestions and make all these laws. And all, and that's, that's not how that works.
I would agree with that.
If you're not voting and you can't bring it up and you can't have discussion, that's one that's.
Listen, I can vote on.
That's under county attorney.
I can vote on the MSBU because it doesn't affect, it doesn't affect the negative.
That's how I'm discussing. What I'm discussing, what she was discussing in the first place was, you recuse yourself from multiple votes, but you're the one who keeps bringing it up in every single one. But you're the one who keeps bringing it up. You're the one who has the most discussion on it. Now, according to procedure, and correct me if I'm wrong, according to statute, if, if you're not voting, you don't have discussion. Am I wrong in saying that, sir?
I wouldn't say you're wrong.
It's not about pointing fingers. It's just complete public trust and transparency. That's all this is. And we, we talked about this. And now, I told you, I've never agreed with you recusing yourself because that's stalling. That is also against metaphor.
Well, this is a problem. This is a problem. It ain't, when that man tells me not to vote, I can't vote. If I vote, I'm no longer, I'm no longer protected under, under that class.
Did you tell him he can't vote?
Ma'am?
Did you tell him he can't vote?
Well, the decision is based off the commissioner's decision. And we, we do the best we can.
Okay, so that is his decision.
Yes, ma'am, the law.
No, he advised me not to vote on these decisions for any improvements on the water. Am I correct, Nate?
The law, the way the law is, they, they incentivize the commissioner to vote. There, there's exceptions for them not to vote. So, they, they want to vote. Um, that is where the law is landed.
Well, it's, it is taxation without representation.
Exactly.
You're represented by four other commissioners on this board.
Three.
Well, actually, it would be two.
Yeah.
We're at two now. So, I mean, we just have to be open and fair across the board.
I'm just going off the bat some, this attorney and what he's told me to do.
Well, I, I think we need to look back at that, honestly.
I mean, that's all I can do.
But the lake is a public issue and it's not a private perk. Um, but you should vote because it's not a private thing. It's not a personal private thing just for you, just for your property.
That's the discussion.
Because everybody's property loses value because whoever is receiving.
That's the discussion you didn't have with him right there.
I'm having it openly in this public meeting. So, I'm, I'm happy to discuss.
Nate?
Well, I'm happy to have attorney general opinion on this. That's what I think I would debate.
You can actually request an advisory opinion from the Florida Board, Florida Commission on Ethics.
Which, you know, at the end of the day, Heather, the money is not, I mean.
I, I mean, I get that too. I, I know we're strapped. We've got the Busy Bee coming, we've got the Pile coming. But we, like Dan said, and I'm echoing her, we need new businesses. We need people to support it. We need growth.
Well, you, you are, you are supporting, but you can't twist their arm and make them come here and build. I mean, there's no way. I mean, we are private. We, we have given incentives. We give tax incentives. Development Commission has done, Development Commission has brought in a Busy Bee and they, you know, they're giving same, the plans for the thing to come, the dollar keeps getting, for long, for. The plans for the thing to come, the dollar keeps getting prolonged, prolonged, but they can't, they can't stop them from prolonging what they're planning to do. It's a private, it's a private organization at the end of the day.
I understand we all have to work together on this. This affects a lot. People in the community, what, hundred ninety-five? Hundred ninety-five residences? Don't we agree on? Hundred ninety-five residences. Your property's not unique. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, can I say something real quick?
Yes, you can.
So in regards to the question about procedure though, the only reason I'm saying that, it's not, it's not specific to this issue. What I'm saying is if we continue down that road though, if somebody decides, well, this is a personal issue, this is an issue that has to do with me, and you keep bringing up the issue and you keep having discussion on the issue, that, that's absolutely an ethics violation. Cause I'm not voting on it, but I'm influencing everybody else on that board. Am I wrong? That, that's the problem. It's not just about this. It's about just all issues. That's why number one. Number two, you just made a comment in reference to, we're trying to bring business here and we can't twist arms. You are absolutely right. I agree with you. But we can start to get along with other people who are trying to bring business in here. We, we can't, we can start trying to make incentives for them to come here by showing good grace with the ones who are trying to get them here. By stopping these, these internal fighting, by, by working together to build what we, we should have had in the first place. I love what you said earlier in regards to, it's just the way it's always been. Absolutely, it's the way it's always been. Why does it have to be that though? Why do we have to have all this internal fighting? Why do we have to live in poverty? Why do my kids and my, the teachers in our school have to pay for their own stuff to, to even teach our kids? Why is this how it always has to be? Because we're, we're making decisions though. Last year, we had multiple things that, that people would come up here and be like, I don't think that's a great idea because it only serves about a one-tenth or one, one-hundredth of the county. That's not a good financial decision then. And now look at us. We, we had this, we warned about this. And now we're in the same position. So I'm asking you, if, if you really want to bring in business, the best way to do it is to start working together with those groups. And I will say this, every time we come in here and Clint, I know we've talked about this multiple times. Every time we come in here, it's, it's almost like a different discussion when it comes to Dogwood Lakes. It's, 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 well, this is the plan for one year. This is the plan for five years. Well, there was a mistake this year and then I come in here, actually it wasn't a mistake. It was a... We need this laid out in a one-year, three-year, five-year, ten-year plan. Money-wise, plan-wise, everything. Everything. So the county can see this is what we're doing and it's laid out. Put it on a chart. Make it obvious. Cause right now it seems like, respectfully, even y'all are a little bit like, well, I, I think we have a twenty thousand dollar bill here. But then we, we might have a hundred here.
Let me explain this. I don't think the graders are here no more. Just like him, he pops up. Our increase in graders, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars tonight for next year. We didn't see that coming.
Sure.
Nobody sees that coming.
Sure.
And when your alarm's only eight, nine million dollars, there's only so much you can pull from.
But, but we're just having the same discussion every week on Dogwood Lakes.
Exactly. Because the money keeps coming up and we want to fix it. Just like the chairman said, we want to fix it. But the money is, we, we struggle from, from the Roman Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, absolutely. So, so do we know...
We can't make these things happen overnight. I wish we could.
Do we know about this bill, uh, when we paid three hundred thousand dollars?
Yes. No, they didn't know about it.
We didn't know about this bill?
Yes.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't...
Absolutely. That's why you made the comment, right? That's why you said, I, I don't want to pay for this. All right. Do we know about this bill when we, when we had a ten thousand dollar bill last night that came through for, for the cyber fraud?
No, that's another one that just popped up.
Oh, we didn't know about that? That's crazy. Um, how are we missing all this?
Well, this, this bill was built on us. We, when we got the bill win, that...
I forget yesterday, but everybody knew about it because it was...
We knew, I knew about it. I knew about it.
I instructed...
I don't even work here.
And there was a, uh, Rachel Disgala right here took care of it, uh, last year.
We, we discussed this back in May. When this first happened, we had this discussion of we're going to have to pay a certain amount for these people. So we knew there was a pending bill coming. We may not know these exact amounts, but we knew there was something coming. That, that's what I'm saying. It just seems like we're, our forethought of, hey, this is what we need to happen six months from now, we're no longer there. We don't think that way. It's almost like we're struggling because we're drowning right now. So we're never getting our head out of the water. We've got to have a, a forethought of, hey, all right, money's going to have to come for this eventually. So maybe we shouldn't make this decision right now to purchase this, right? And we got us to, hold on, let me finish. And then we have to stop saying, yeah, but we're getting a Busy Bee and a Pilot soon. But we're getting a Busy Bee and a Pilot soon. I understand we're going to get that. We don't know when. I understand that money's eventually going to come here, but what if it's not till now, then five years? Cause I'm pretty sure we thought Circle K was going to bring more money. Am I wrong in saying that? Because when I asked y'all last year, how much do you anticipate? It was like, ah, forty, sixty? Somewhere around that for, for the gas tax, right? You know what we thought? And then I think we only got like eighteen. Am I wrong, Ms. Angie? Yeah, it was like eighteen thousand. We were way off. So what I'm, what I'm saying is stop assuming things that are coming in for, for funds and, and start seeing it for expenses before you see the gardens. Am I making sense? I, I feel like I'm making sense. That's how you run a business.
Yeah, when you said we, you made lots of sense.
Roger that. So I, I'm just asking for all of that to, just be thought about from now on. I, I really don't think it's being thought of. And, uh, I texted you earlier, but in regards to the Dogwood Lakes, I do think a, a separate meeting, one year, three year, five year, fifteen or ten year, have it laid out so everybody can see exact numbers. I mean, get within a ten thousand dollar. I understand there's going to be a difference when you get to that ten, five, ten, fifteen year. I understand that. But, but get within a margin because right now it's like forty thousand here. Ah, we might do a hundred and fifty, but it might be three hundred and twenty-five. The numbers are so far apart. I just don't think you guys have a grasp on what that is yet.
I don't have a grasp on what the economy is doing.
And that's, and that's fair. And that's fair.
I just want to be honest with you. Tonight was the first time I knew the graders were going to go up a quarter million dollars a year starting next budget year. I mean, you tell me where that's coming from. So like I said, you got one point two million, maybe one point three million of those. The pilot's going to bring additional money. That money's already sucked up in the next year.
I agree with you. That's why we can't keep talking like this money's coming in.
I'm saying it wasn't against these people or it wasn't against the community I'm living in, Dogwood Lakes. I'm just saying we can help ourselves a little bit more by creating some kind of funding order that these things can make, we can make it happen faster than this board can make it happen.
But forethought. We need Jeremy to...
I mean, you've had an MSB for the last six years. Can you imagine what we'd be today with that money?
All right. Thank you, Gary.
Yeah, could I say something, Mr. Shelby?
Yes, you can. Go ahead and say something. Hold on, you want me to...
I've been here five years working with Ken. I've worked, be part of, that's the reason I'm gray-headed. I've worked, be part of my career, all I've ever done is public service for forty-two years. First thing that needs to happen, and I hope I don't get myself in trouble with the board tonight. If you can't get along, you ain't going to get nothing done. Number two, this board does the very best with funds they can. What do you do when healthcare goes up twenty percent that you wouldn't anticipate? You know what our insurance cost is that the taxpayers here pay? Over a million dollars health insurance. A property tax. This board don't set nothing but the military. The school has their separate tax that we all pay. I had kids in school. They grown now. They still not gone, grown, gone, but they grown. We all have to pay taxes. I'm like Garrett. I think there's a better plan out there. But as long as we're doing what we're doing tonight, how are you going to make it? How are you going to get to the same goal? You look at Washington DC, this ain't a hooker right now. I hate drama. Sometimes I want to go to the house, but you know what keeps me here? People like y'all, good people. That can work together. Holmes County and Steel will make it, y'all. This good thing's only arising. If we pray a little bit harder instead of fussing a little bit, we'd be better off. I, I want to say this too. Ma'am, I appreciate what you said a while ago because you're speaking from your heart. But this board does the very best they can. I represent this board. I've been with them individually. Sometimes Mr. Earl's right. They may not please everybody with their vote, but they really try. We working hard to make Holmes County better. Is there a better out? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, there is. If you could say that from the White House to that house, you know, we could all do better. But please think when you, uh, say something to someone, it's like this attorney tonight. He's doing the very best he can. He don't want to, uh, give the wrong legal opinion. But can he make a mistake? Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir, he can. I make a mistake every day because I'm trying. But let's pull together. Please, let's pull together.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
My name is Lori Palmerson and I just have two things. One is every year at Dogwood Lakes, because we're separate from the city, we have to collect our own mosquitoes bringing money. And let me tell you, just from attempting to collect the mosquitoes bringing money and not making it, this past year, we ended up with, do you remember exactly how much?
We pitched in the difference.
Uh, Don said pitched in a lot and, uh, Dogwood Lakes ended up pitching in. Dogwood Lakes Golf Course ended up pitching in. But when you go door to door and you're knocking on people's doors and saying, hey, you know, it's fifteen dollars and we'll be covered, you know, and no one will get sick. And some people don't ever answer the door. Other people say, no thanks. So I was, I was, uh, taking that and putting it towards, you know, us having today, uh, whatever it's called, MSBU, collecting it, uh, trying to get people to answer questions. Are you even on board with this? What is it going to cost us? Because as taxpayers, sure, I wouldn't mind, but can everybody afford that? Probably not. And then my last question is to Clint, are you going to vote to help Dogwood Lakes?
That's an attorney question. I mean, I don't...
Pass it up.
I mean, I'm telling you, in what avenue, I cannot, according to the attorney, that canal sits on my property. That, my canal and the Dogwood Lakes Golf Course is the only place on that canal that's...
You took, you took a situation from a different county, correct?
No, ma'am. I mean, there, there was a variety of reasons and I, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but I was answering your question. There, there was a similar case law in Bay County where a commissioner was down, they were charged. The issue I was having, and Heather, I've got the statute here and I keep it printed out with me all times. It, whether or not there's a special private gain or loss, and then the definition there is one through four. And it's the degree which there is uncertainty at the time of the vote. And I think that uncertainty element is what we're trying to do is keep these guys within, within the bumper, within the white lines here. It's not, not always clear decisions. But I, I, I would hope that they made a good vote at the time of the, of the vote. And they, they all fill out the forms. I think they said form nine. I think they fell on every dime and checked the box. Um, I, I, my perception is that it's not been a dodge and it should might be in your, in your eyes. I'm not, I'm not aware of that if that's the case. But in my opinion, there was a potential spec, special gain. I mean, how many houses are out there? I actually own the lake.
Hundred ninety-five.
Hundred ninety-five.
In the grand scheme of things, it may, may not be a lot of houses, you know, but if that lake level goes up where it should be, what will that do to the value of property?
Well, bring it back, yeah, bring it back up. Uh, our property values are plummeting.
Right. Yes, ma'am.
There was a plot of land that just sold. It was listed at thirty-nine thousand dollars and it sold for fifteen.
Right. That's right. And we, we got other things coming down the pipeline that I even brought up, whether it's, you know, that the Horst family could sit around now with, um, the, the home state taxes. You know, what, what are we going to do if that goes away? Um, every next, every year. So I mean, that, 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 there's just a lot that they're having to look through down the, down the pipeline that...
So we will never make warrants? We will never make warrant on this issue at Dogwood Lakes?
Well, that's something else we're looking into. Um, I, I, I feel like at some point, which there's, there's been a lot that's been discussed here. I, I think we can make warrant. It depends on the issue.
Would you, would you mind getting an actual, what the Ethics Commission was...
Sure. I, I'll reach out to Pat Gleason. She's a close friend of mine and I, I call her regularly. And then we, we call back, y'all. Cause the biggest thing, I mean, I'm sure Clint, he wants to vote.
I don't have time. I don't have time to log it on.
He's our home.
But, but slap on the wrist for real. It's, it's supposed to be made a good vote, uh, these decisions that they make and it's within our state. And we were hanging our hat on one-twelve-three-one-four-three, so apparently one through four. And then that degree of uncertainty that we don't know is under commit. You know, defines what a relative is. It's a father, mother, son, daughter, husband, wife, brother, sister-in-law. And that's it. Son-in-law. So was it strict? It's, it's a relative that in one twelveth defines what a relative is. Obviously Clint, he owns the land, but Mitch has a son. Is it son-in-law or a son?
But, but we're such a small community, you know, that's so hard. And just then it's like you got to look at the Wilson's land or whatever road you're trying to repave and...
It's done for a whole town.
Is that a special game? I mean, this is home state.
It is.
You will get a change, you will get a change for this. Well, it don't matter what county it is. We all follow under the Florida statutes. Not a problem.
That's true.
Mr. Chairman.
The court's...
Richard Wilson. All right. So I would just like to say, um, with all the discussions going on here back and forth, maybe we need to have a special session strictly for Dogwood Lakes.
I'll just reach in.
And move the, move on, get the people from Dogwood Lakes in, in a public hearing or a special session and discuss these issues. That way you can have more, it, it would be directly, that's the only reason you have in the meeting, is Dogwood Lakes. Because there's a lot of issues at hand. You know what? I don't live on Dogwood Lakes. I live on dirt roads. I love that on dirt road lakes. I'd like to have just the right-of-way mode down.
There's some houses that are on Dogwood Lakes that you're interested in moving up there. I've got my house.
Everybody's...
But in, in forty years, I think I've been on Dogwood Lakes once. But my tax dollars still going to help Dogwood Lakes, just like their tax dollars going to help my, my road getting graded every other month. I think the board should do a special session strictly for Dogwood Lakes issue and, uh, so we can, so we can move on. All right. This board will have to put a workshop on this. Man, yes, uh, Mr. Stafford, can you get somebody to answer this question about the MSBU?
If you want to try to get, is the reason we have the meeting is to try to educate on the MSBU? I can call her and say shit there, yeah.
All right. Do y'all, do y'all want to get this board upstairs and make a workshop? What I, I would like, I like for Matt to go back and get an Attorney General opinion on my situation. Maybe Mitch, that's up to Mitch. Because I know he reached out to her before that came back and he said I need to stay away from voting on all this. So I think that'd be good information to have for next meet. I think we should hold the next meet at the Holmes County Agribusiness Center because there's more room in there.
We can open up the golf course.
I, I'd say that the agribusiness center probably would be a lot better because we got all the chairs. I mean, it's just a lot more open.
We can't livestream or record at that.
Um, then the second thing, I'm like, I'm like, Mr. Stafford, I think we need to look at, listen to the people. If they want to end this year, that's great. If they don't, that's understandable. Anyway, there might be people, and I'll tell you, and I shouldn't bring my family into this, but my mom come seeing this morning. She wasn't happy. So, and I, you know, and she goes, is this including me too? And I'm like, well, yeah, well, it went from there to probably not having them making something eat for next year. I mean, but you know, how do you, how do you overcome that? How do you overcome the money? How do you, how do you make it better? And that's where I'm frustrated because it's like Earl said, the money, we just don't have the money. I want it, I want to fix it. I called it on this morning and I think all our hearts in the right place. It's just the money's just not there, not matching up with our hearts. I mean, I don't know.
What are your ideas to, to get the money?
That's one thing. Have this workshop discussing all that.
There's a huge tax reform clause, isn't there? In the state of Florida, a huge tax reform?
Not, not one more.
The states of Florida. It's billions of dollars.
Oh, yeah, through appropriations. Yeah, we applied for that several times to our legislators. We have, how many, how many times have we applied through that?
Oh, gosh.
We applied several times for this like we done. And I, I'll tell you, I had a state official out there. One of the things he said... And I, I'll tell you, I had a state official out there, one of the things he said. Yeah, James Kuta, we, they're, they're the ones that applied for it, for us. Liberty Partners did, and we've just turned down every time. Yeah, money's not, money, the money's just not, I mean, I think the money's there, it's just not, we have tried every avenue.
Alright, this board, this board want to do a workshop, they're going.
And you know, we may look at, the MSBU, the people around the lakes, if we, if they, just say they got an MSBU to repair the lake, the people around that little lake, they gonna take a large part of that. There's also a MSPTU, which may be more. But then again, you got to figure if it's either one of them, the county will have to get in with them, just to talk to residents.
Well, the question is, does everybody out there want? That's my thing, does everybody want?
It's got to have specifics, it's through the project lake.
So I think that workshop would be good for that, so when do you want to hold it?
Well, I think we need to get Nate things to get an, an answer to how at that meeting while we hold. So, Attorney General opinion.
Those, those don't just happen quickly.
Yeah, so it may be a while. Well, the workshop, we're not gonna vote anyway.
No, you know, that's what I'm saying, we still have it.
So, let's schedule the workshop.
This is the only thing, and I, I hate to put people on the spot, Mr. Roy into this, but there. Do, and do you mind getting, and I'm not, you guys don't think I'm trying to push this? I'm just showing you the options. So can you speak on what we need to do to get the MSBU, what the process is, so we know the timeline?
Yes, well, that's what I guess, your mother's saying, just go ahead and speak, and you have a brushy book on it.
The last thing I just want to say is, you all keep calling this a Dogwood Lakes problem. This is not a Dogwood Lakes problem, this is a Holmes County problem. It's a public lake, and you say you want us to pay for it, but it's, it's a public lake, and it is used by Holmes County residents, not this Dogwood Lake resident. So, we need to get out of the mindset that this is a Dogwood Lakes community issue. It's not, it's a public lake.
I don't think anybody's gonna speak in that. Well, we're trying to figure out how we're gonna pay for it, so we're trying to figure it out.
So if we're gonna do the MSBU, but then every ta- every person, every taxpayer, and Holmes County needs to be part of this MSBU. It's not Dogwood Lakes' fault, and it's not Dogwood Lakes' problem, it is Holmes County's problem. So we need to get in right mindset, thank you.
Mr. Williams, so God's election, uh, Nate, I discussed it, and you bring up a good point. But what happens is, if you, if tax the entire county, it's not an MSBU.
It's taxes.
So, whatever. But MSBU is, it can be done multiple ways, the county, county commissioners can enact it. The association can request it. Well, I, I'll just say, the fringe of the family. So, or it can go on the ballot. If I'm going on the ballot, you've got eleven thousand plus voters voting on one hundred ninety-five people are gonna pay.
Right, I don't think so.
Well, they do, it's, it's like eleven thousand one hundred sixty voters in whole county.
Well, something eleven thousand one hundred sixty voters is gonna pay.
You had that morning.
But, I mean, I, I don't get a vote, unless it's a little back. But, but it's strictly up to the county, or the association, I know it's not an association, but we're calling it the back of the range. I think if we can get someone to come that has a fish with it, explain it. There's multiple things, there's MSBU's, there's MSBUs, there's another one. I've looked at Santa Rosa County, Ocalista County, Walton County, uh, Washington, Jackson, all of them have them. Nobody's ever put it on the ballot, but enacted by the board, or requested by a homeowner's association, or a community. And it's specific to a geographical location.
They do that because they want to improve their community.
Yeah, and there's specific things that money can be used for. It can go outside that, but they have to propose it to the board, the board has to agree.
So this board can actually vote on it without even going to ballot, have you voted on?
That's the way ninety-nine will remember that.
Wow.
Statute states that the board of county commissioners has the authority to enact it.
And so the people who didn't pay that tax and are part of that have no say in it? Wow.
But if I got a voter shows up, I'll have a vote on it, I don't consent to voting.
I said, order the citizens that live out there to sign a petition or quit.
You're trying to, we have a hard time getting sixteen dollars for the seniors, yeah.
I get it.
That's all I know about it, this one, I was in Miami when I got the call, so I'll leave it at the word, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
All right, Mr. Chairman, let me get, let me get on there, do you see if she's gonna charge? I mean, but this is what they do, they make me do this. Let me see if she'll charge, or she'll come do us free, and I get back with you, but.
And then we call them in.
But you probably don't want to schedule it after you get next. Board meeting, give me a chance to get her, and see what she available.
Alright, is that our report?
Yes, sir, Don, it is handed.
I'll be glad to play with it.
Thank you, Don.
Alright, we're going down to the next item? Don, you through, I'm sorry.
One other thing, excuse me, um, if you could please, when you're, when you're fixing to have the meeting, I would like for it to be known, because I did not know a clue about this MSBU at all.
Alright.
Until about a week ago.
It's online, it's online.
I would like for it to be known, so it wasn't come to the meeting. And yes, I am the one that handed out the flowers, because none, none of us know about it. And there are a lot of snowbirds that live out there that people, that do not have, or do not know about this at all, that aren't at their property, that may be taxed on this. So, we do want to know about it.
Alright. Yeah, we'll put it out.
The last meeting, when you guys started talking about it, it just went off.
We tried to fix that out, I hope it's still going.
Alright. Alright, we're going down to next item, Lake Castic disclaimer and interlock agreement, pal A.
Nate, did you bring this back?
Well, it was just on there. Okay, but I was just gonna give you that, Nate, that we're working on the interlock agreement, I thought they'd contact you. Constantly on, we're trying to get a, get a number of, of what would be fair for them to receive off of permits that they might sell there. But the disclaimer that was put together by Aaron, and reviewed by all of us, I, I feel comfortable with it. I just, just getting the logistics of, of the sale of the permitting, whether it's through the following down here, or whether actually physically going down there, because they aren't the closest area for them, so I think that would be something that we would have to get in agreement, and I work on the sale on that. Um, we kind of put that on the back, or in line with what we were dealing with on the, uh, on the other interlock agreement that we've worked on a lot of this week, so. Did y'all, did y'all have a suggestion on, on fees with, that we, a percentage?
Well, the boss means a dollar per people.
One dollar per people.
Right. And I know we talked in the last meeting about bringing it in, for the charges of that Alabama.
That's right.
With this meeting.
That's right, and we did look into that. I, I, I don't, I know their calls, the last group that came down, it was an issue, and I know they weren't coming out, and I, I don't think it's something we can exclude a foreign resident from coming in the property, if you have it open to the public. Now, we, we could increase an out-of-state fee from a driver, that, that might be a resident out of Alabama, who might be charging him one hundred fifty. Comes down, but I, I, the exclusion portion is what I'm having an issue with.
And this gives, these hundred fifty is what we had voted on in the constitution.
That was my initial proposal, remember?
But since, you know, we've had the, it wouldn't take a buck from Alabama much to come up with a hundred fifty dollars, get them in a truck, mate, and redo it all again. So we, you want to, I suppose, raise it, get this week.
Go ahead, Nate, you come forward, come forward and speak, speak, Nate.
Hey, y'all, me and Nelson, we hope, appreciate what, I hope it's safe. I appreciate what y'all done, I'm, I, uh, I, what y'all done for Lake Cassidy. I learned to swim for Lake Cassidy, learned to fish there, I ate a bunch of fish there, learned how to jump out of a tree from Lake Cassidy. My fifth great-grandparents are buried up on the hill from Lake Cassidy. Many relatives thereafter, including my parents, are buried up on the hill from Lake Cassidy. Y'all have done everything you can to save that boat landing and swim hole. And I understand if you, at this point, after trying this, I understand if you close the gates, but I would submit to you, if you'd raised those out-of, out-of-state fees, my suggestion would be five hundred dollars out-of-state fee, quite frankly. And with that said, uh, and I know you've already said, said the piece, that, that the money that you spent on Lake Cassidy, and, uh, the, uh, the efforts, all the efforts that you spent there, I think it's an insult to me, uh, that you're only charging fifty dollars for, for local people. I mean, I think we all know what it costs to go sit down to Cancun's and eat. Just for two people to go sit there to Cancun's and eat is good food. But, I mean, it costs fifty dollars for two people to go sit down there and eat, or a Tasty Freeze, or Pea Knack, or whatever. You know, I, I would submit to you that a hundred dollars would be more appropriate for, for local people. You know, for all the what you spent there, and your time and energy. And that would, uh, I mean, and any, even if you could, uh, put a restriction on how many, how, how many guests that, 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 whatever you're calling that, that, uh.
Carla?
Yes. And, uh, that, that would be, you know, that would, that, you know, five hundred dollars for, for out-of-state, a hundred dollars for, for local, and then put a restriction on how many. Now, it's not your job to enforce that, that's law enforcement's job to enforce that. And I would, I would submit to you that, that, uh, as an elected, sheriff's an elected, law enforcement, it's not his, his, and his job, I think he would agree in his job, but not necessarily to enforce the law, it's to solve a problem. So if you said that, if you said that, you know, with so many, it's, it's for so many people, he's not necessarily gonna go on there to enforce it, he's gonna use that as a tool. So, that would be my suggestion, a hundred dollars. I think it's an insult that you could put it at fifty dollars. All the money that you spent there, a hundred dollars for local, five hundred for, for out-of-state, and then to put some sort of maybe, uh, four, four, four guests, six guests, whatever you wanna do. But a hundred for local and five hundred for out-of-state, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, is, is there a discussion on that?
Can we, can we, I know we talked about, I didn't, it wasn't on the agenda for some reason, but last meeting, we can bring this up, as we just talked about, can we vote on it?
Yep.
Okay, because I would love to raise it, the out-of-state to, uh, five hundred.
Alright, you want to put that on the motion?
Can we, guess I would.
Alright, I have a motion to, that these, uh, will be.
Can we leave the local like it is?
Can we leave the local like it is, or be?
I mean, our locals is, uh, a hundred dollars would be given to our locals, I mean, that's, I'm good with the people. And if it, uh, they all got to understand, you know, we got one chop shot in this. If it don't work, I'm gonna put it on record, I'm gonna be the first one to say it. So, uh, I give it a hundred and ten percent, I want everyone to know, know that, you know, this is it.
Alright, I have motion on the floor to, uh, make the eighty-five hundred for, uh, out-of-state residents, do your second. Alright, I have motion in a second, any discussion?
Yeah, oh, so, let me ask you, I'm just about calling people out, don't think, don't think. You say, you're gonna try this, and if it don't work, this is it, what do you, what do you refer to?
I mean, if it doesn't blow up like Happy, Happy Pass, I mean, I'd say this could be the same.
Without saying that I'm along with it, yes.
It's, uh, we put our effort into making it work, and if it don't work, it's not our fault. We put everything towards to make it work.
Alright, any more discussion, halfway.
Yes.
Yes. We get invited?
Yes. Alright, we're going down now to the ACDC Board, uh, round one session. That we don't do anything this night, or?
I don't know, Nate was looking into it, I guess he was gonna talk to the legislators, because I know we all discussed trying to talk to the legislators about it, if it needed to be done, because it was so old, we all asked him to look at it.
We looked at the process, as y'all know, they were created by the legislature in order to amend or, or change their charter, you know, they have to be through the legislature, and the only way, if y'all wanted to go down that road to do, I, I don't know how specific we need to be, I think, if, if that's what y'all want to do, it could be vague, but you have to petition them for a resolution to look into it and potentially change it. I know we've got some members here tonight that, that they want to speak on, are, you know, are they comfortable with the number? And, um, that would, they prefer to lower it, but ultimately, it's, it's not y'all's decision, it's the legislative decision to make it.
Did you ever get a chance to reach out to Chain Abbott or any of them to talk to them about this? Yeah, okay.
Um, I, I did, obviously, I, we, we reviewed their charter quite a bit, it's not, there's more to it than just the number. You know, there, there's, there's advisory members, there's honorary members on there, they've got two, you know, points.
Well, my thing is, you know, we got a board member on here, the city's got board members on there, and no one ever shows up to those things, you know, we just, we let the development commission do it. So you got all these advisories and everything on there, and I, you know, I don't know, that's what I was asking.
The process would be to submit a formal resolution for them to change it. I, they'd probably come back, and that would start the dialogue on granular details of how many. I'm sure, they may even look to the development commission, I, I don't, I don't know. But I think to start that thing in dialogue, that would be the first step, would be a resolution from y'all to change.
But isn't it a certain date you gotta have it in by, because the bill has to be filed? Any type of actual bill that has to be filed on?
Yes, sir, it would be a limit too.
Alright, uh, go ahead, Nate.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask Mr. Erickson why he thinks it need reorganized now. What, what's the problem with it now that it need reorganized?
You know, we had talked about this in the last meeting, and I think, we all talked about it, and, um, I cannot, I, you know, it always comes up, I can't remember the date, what, what does that charter go back to, nineteen?
Nineteen sixty-one.
Nineteen sixty-one. Um, and then, then, I looked at that charter, and there's, and how they relate, how they put out the members, for one. They defined it as.
Like you want to put the members out?
No, I'm saying.
If they're doing good.
Can I speak? I'm not saying you haven't done good, I'm just saying how the charter referring to is one woman, one person, one member, like, just one, one woman representative. That charter needs to be changed, and how it presents itself. I'm not saying change what the members, I'm just saying change outside up, because right now, you got members from the city council, you got members from the board of commissioners supposed to be on there, and no one's showing up to any of it. So if they're not utilizing those seats, or if they're not a member at large, or, or members are not being there, why even have it there? Why, why not go back and fix some of that stuff?
Why do you need to fix it, I mean, if they want to show up, the candidate.
They don't, not to like their own.
When you're chairman of the board, you don't show up, so why, why don't you come?
Alright, now, listen, listen, would you just go?
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I, I, I just get irritated when you've got people that are trying to tear down what you're trying to do good for Holmes County.
Nobody's tearing down anything.
And, uh, we're trying real hard to do good things, and we've done good things with this man right back here. We've done good things in Holmes County, and we got good things yet to come. But I don't understand why this man here is up saying bad things about us, and, I'm sorry, but I, he, he was up, so. And, uh, you know, I, my thoughts are, well, I guess like an old saying, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. What's wrong with it?
Yeah, we all done it that way, yeah.
Well, my question is, I watched the last meeting, I wasn't able to attend. And so we're talking about the Development Commission, and y'all are talking about changing, reorganizing the Development Commission, and not a single person has reached out to us. It's very simple. I got the nineteen fifty-seven law and the nineteen sixty-one law. There was originally seven members in fifty-seven, and then they moved it to twelve members. And it's real easy, it's two per district, there's five districts, and then there's two at large, and the two at large needs to be women. Now, the women on our board do a great job, and we have more than two women.
Why does it have to be women?
Well, that's how it was written back in nineteen sixty-one.
That's what I'm questioning.
Well, I mean, that's what I'm talking about. Are you trying to get women off the board?
Not what I'm trying to say. Make it available for anybody. I mean, it's just a question. We live in a society now, you don't know if they're women or men, how they represent themselves. Well, that's, that's what I'm trying to tell you.
But, but the question is...
Hold down, hold down. Go ahead.
But it's, our Development Commission used to cost the county around, what, thirty thousand a year? And that's all it cost the county. You look over at Washington County and Jackson County, you're looking at Walton County, a few hundred thousand a year. It cost us thirty. This year, we plan on it costing you nothing. We don't, we, we lost our secretary position because Mr. Erickson said he was going to take our funding away.
That's incorrect, though.
That's what you said.
That's very incorrect.
But anyway, and, 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 you know, Mr. Stafford, you came by and talked with her, and then you came and you changed the motion on it. So you can't say that's not safe. But what I am saying is, is we're going to try to run it without a secretary that's helped save the county. But thirty thousand dollars for everything that we've done...
You're going to do a reorganization?
Hey, hey, hey!
No, no, I want to say it. You're the ones that came up here and wanted a hundred thousand dollars. This board voted for a hundred thousand dollars to go towards the Development Commission. A hundred thousand for what?
Hey, hey, hey!
Okay, Mr. Chairman.
Either we can calm it down or recess the meeting.
Or we can take it outside.
No, no, that's just...
I'm talking about the talk.
All right, all right, go ahead.
No threat, um, to talk. The hundred, the hundred thousand dollars, for what? What are you talking about, the hundred thousand dollars?
I'm talking about with the Development Commission. You and Mr., um, um, Don right there came to the board, and we went into agreement. After the money starts coming in from our, from these cellies, what you're bringing, I mean, what you guys worked, yeah. It'd be a hundred thousand dollars a year. So, and we voted on contributing a hundred thousand dollars a year to the Development Commission a year after these places get started. So what I'm trying to tell you, and we all voted on this, to give them a hundred thousand a year. So by you saying that it's not costing the county, it will be costing the county, because that's what you guys asked for, and that's what I'm just saying. I'm just making that, I'm making that statement. The question is, is in the original project gateway contract, it was, we would bring, BZB would be the first one, their fuel tax is going to be over two million dollars. And we asked for five percent, for operating money, five percent only after the county got, was paid for, what, a full year? Yeah, so that's not going to fly. But the things we do, our problem is, is why does the county commissioners want to change us when we stand on our own, we have money, we do our job? The property, the Deacon Road property, you know who got the buyer to it? You know who got the buyer. We did the background search, we got, we got you five hundred thousand dollars on property you paid two hundred and fifty thousand for. We got an investor, he's going to build a hundred and twenty homes on it. Even when some of the county commissioners were after us, we still done, still did that because that works best for the county. And I just, if you're going to talk about reorganization to the Development Commission, I think we need to at least be at the table. That's, that's what I say.
Mr. Chairman, I want to talk straight to you, and I apologize for being out of order. But the Development Commission is completely and totally self-sufficient. We spend no Holmes County taxpayers' money, period. The money that we spend is money that we generate. It's money that we get for rent, for selling property, buying and reselling property, and that's what we're charged to do through the legislation. We're a public corporation, we can make contracts, we can sell property, we can buy property, all through the legislation. They told us we could do that. We're not breaking any laws about doing that, and our members are good members. We've got twelve, and we need to keep them. And we appreciate all the help that we get from y'all. As far as appointing our members, thank you very much. But we don't ask for any taxpayer money, we don't want to spend taxpayer money. We spend money that we generate to try to make taxpayer money, to help Holmes County. So, you know, I won't go any further than that, but I don't think we need to reorganize it. I think we're doing fine like this. So I appreciate the time, sorry for that order.
Thank you. Thank you. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and again, apologize for, we, like Mr. Garrett said, we need to get along. We need to get along, and we most always get along, but when somebody wants to reorganize us, at least we need to be at the table. That's all I'm asking, thank you.
Thank you. All right, does the board want to do anything with this?
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be a good idea, and I feel like we're going back to what we did before in the last meeting. Just have Nate reach out to find out the process and see when it has to be in, or if it's something that, you know, we can look at, because that thing is, like Mr. Baker said, it's the way it's been nineteen sixty or nineteen fifty-eight, the way it's always been, I think maybe looking at it and doing some changes would be a bad thing.
Earl, can I say something?
Yes, ma'am, come on.
When I was up here earlier, and we were talking about how we didn't have money for anything, one of the things I said, I just want to reiterate, is that the Economic Development Committee is making money for Holmes County. And I think every single one of you guys should have projects that is making money for Holmes County. It's so important, that's what we need to pull ourselves out of the level. And so I want to encourage you, just from my point of view, to get along with the Economic Development Committee. They're doing what we all need to be doing.
Would you be interested in serving on their board?
Yes.
You would?
Yes.
Because I know there's a helping position. I feel we got to have twelve in that board, though, y'all only got five.
Well, there's two members, there's two members...
It's non-paid.
There's non-paid, there's two members per position.
I'm saying, why don't we have five, like y'all got?
Well, it goes back to that charter, what I'm talking about, and that's why, you know, that's what I just wanted to look at. That's, that's what I'm discussing with this board, that have made, moved forward and asked if that can be looked at. I mean, I don't know, the board might not, they might want to keep all fourteen people, whatever we got on there.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Here's the Willsey Happy Hollow Road. Just a few months ago, did y'all not write a check to the Development Commission for over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Well, we wrote one to them, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, it's over six hundred thousand dollars.
No.
Direct, direct to the board.
And he promised that it would be paid back by the Development Commission. It would not cost any taxpayer money. That when it came to the interest on the loan that y'all agreed to take, that he was going to reimburse, the Development Commission was going to reimburse. All of a sudden, it came out to where, no, I shouldn't have, the Development Commission should not have to absorb all that. We paid over two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So yes, taxpayer money did come from the BZB project because of the interest on the loan that the county commissioners kept the Development Commission secure. Is that correct? That was taxpayer money? Is that not where you get your money?
Yes, ma'am, that's where you get your money.
And he was supposed to pay the whole six hundred and something back, but we wrote a check from the county commissioners for that total interest paid on that loan. Okay? He paid back half of what y'all paid back, correct? Is that correct?
Yeah, half of what it cost the taxpayers.
Myself, my husband, and other people witnessed him at this meeting on a different date, promise that there would be zero money paid by the taxpayers on the BZB project. That was not true, that did not happen. You can cut it any way you want, but it did cost the taxpayers money. And this started in nineteen sixty-one. Can I ask how many counties in the state of Florida still have the Development Commission? Do you know?
I can't answer that.
Does Mr. Rono, would he like to share?
Yeah, I can tell.
How, how many counties?
If I could say a couple of them.
Tell me the podium, please, Joe.
There's either one or two counties in the state that is, that is a dependent special district like us. Everybody else needs county money to operate, okay? So if we were run by the county, we would have county money to operate. All of those counties that you're talking about, they have to support, Washington County has to fund their economic development, Jackson County does, Walton County does. We, I think we got the best thing going because we're self-sufficient. But I've said it several times, I don't know why, it keeps coming up. But I came before this board and said it shouldn't cost the county a single thing. I never said we would pay all of it. Newmarket Tax Credit was going to pay us way more than the money we had involved with it. You remember that during that time? And we drug around, we drug around, we drug around, we lost our opportunity on the Newmarket Tax Credit. It wasn't that I was saying that I'm going to pull money out of my pocket and pay for that, or the Development Commission was, we lost our opportunity to get close to a million dollars to pay. So we've got two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars out each on an investment that'll bring us in more than two million a year. I don't know of any county that wouldn't take that.
Thank you, Joe. All right, you want, did you want Nate to check this out?
It's a pleasure of the board.
The, you know, and I want Joe and Mr. Chairman to know, you know, when I voted last week to look at the restructuring, I feel like there's a, there's an improvement in all of us. And I'd love for the board to sit down, we all would see if there is room for improvement, in which I left the thing they was, especially working off a charter that old. And who knows, we might be coming up with something good. Get with a beat what's there with the twelve members, I don't know if that's an issue or not. I've heard it every, something on the board, and of course, and I know I haven't been but one of the meetings. So, and I'd like to come to the board and just learn y'all's process more. But that was my reason, I just feel like we could all do better, give them a chance, listen to some ideas.
What is it, do you want to say something?
Maybe really, I mean, are we letting them?
Go ahead, you don't... Mr. Chairman, our board consists of twelve board members. Okay, that's regular board members. The county commission has a seat on that board as ad hoc members. There's a seat there for the county members. There's a seat for the mayor of the cities to be there at those meetings and have them in there. They don't have voting privileges, but they do have seats. And they do have opportunities to come to our meetings and give them to them anything we're doing. Help us make decisions. Like I say, they don't have voting privileges, but they have privileges to be there and help us see what we need to do. And, you know, so far, we don't have any, any of those people show up. And it's the chair of the board, it's the mayors of the cities, all kind of spot. And we'd love to have them. I mean, we'd love to have people come and see our, what we're doing, and hear what we're doing, and, you know, be a part of it, and sit down and talk with them, we'd love to do that. Wouldn't be a problem at all, y'all just tell us, and we'll call a meeting. We'll sit down and talk about it. I mean, I don't know what problem is in nineteen sixty-one, but everybody seems to have a problem when it comes to it. We're doing our job, we're leaving, but we're doing our job, so, you know, kind of like me, I'm old, I still try to do my job, so same way with this. If we need to change it, I guess we need to, but I have to say what we need to, so.
That's one of the things, you want to skip on me just a little bit?
You want to admit it?
I'm good with what the board says. Just to sit down.
If we don't change a thing, if we said anything, if we walk through it, and...
All right, but you want to throw a day on it, or?
Gentlemen, I'll be open to this.
Absolutely.
And I promise you, I'll be all, I'll be all ears.
We got to make a progress, because unless, unless just you want to go, or, or what? But I think the whole board needs to be involved in.
Okay. Be here for the whole board, more ideas for better. We may come around and not change a thing when we get there, at least.
Yeah, just call one in, and then, but we'll have to, we'll have to call at the same time with a... Yeah, it has to be advertised.
Whatever y'all need to do.
Don, y'all go ahead and schedule, and just let us know when we'll call, we'll call specifically. All right.
I just wanted to say this, Mr. Chairman, and I'm going to direct this and turn it to note that all this stuff saying I was after an individual secretary wasn't the case. The vote was stop funding until the result of three hundred, six hundred thousand dollar issue. And to Joe's remark, I don't appreciate, you might not call it a threat, or a threat about meeting up in the street, but I mean, that's not a place for this. To talk about not the ways that... I mean, yeah, okay, well, I'm just telling you, I want to put that on record.
All right, Richard, go ahead.
Richard Wilson. So I just want to let everybody that's here know that HCDC meetings are open for everybody to go to. We'd love to see more than just two members of the public at HCDC meetings. And when they're posting the special session, I would like to remind the HCDC that they do fall under sunshine, and that all their meetings should be advertised, not just posted on their website, so that everyone in the community that would like to attend a meeting knows when their meetings are, where they are, and that they are available to attend them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, no more discussion, I'll make sure we get this set up. Let's go down to the D-Remodeling. Please, you have to add on that.
So, Lyle, we're going to, Don Crowe and Lyle, call, talk to me. Do you remember we had that special, we had special maintenance reference to Northdale subdivision and the D-Remodels? And so do you look at the packet right here? We got a quote from this company. This company did work for the city of Bonafite. So what we'd be able to do is piggyback, I talked to the mayor, we can piggyback off of them to do the project at Northdale subdivision, which all that, that water went in there, that creek, all that water to bring in there, in the red line area. Recommendation was for thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars and zero cents.
How about?
Thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and fourteen dollars to clear that out. At the current moment, Lyle said we could go ahead and make a motion to move forward with that and go off of the, piggyback off of City of Bonafite for the project, because they have already funded amounts to do the same work inside the city and make it contingent upon, um, water management funding, because they got the money to do it.
All right, you want to make that mention?
That would be a form of motion.
All right, have a motion on forward, you hear a second?
Say.
Have a motion in a second, any discussion? How's the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
So Nate, what we need to do is just piggyback off that contract, and David gave Lyle to find out the funding, and then we'll get moving forward with the contractor on that.
Northdale says we give Lyle to see if they have...
Yeah, he says it's there, it might be there, we just move forward with that vote. But it's right there on the, it's the red line. It's the red line.
All right, it's definitely after, you have a motion to the chairman? You got something?
I do, Nate, if I, if I give a Westfield, if I could give the Westfield, the sidewalk, Phil, if we're talking about already suggesting... But if actually doesn't, down the Westfield, I know we done the red. Or did we just actually close it off? Because I'm telling you, the twelve-foot edging payment right here, you got a six to seven-inch drop off to you that wall. That's how bad it is.
That's right, that's right. Safety reasons, we call it. Yeah, we closed it off. It's over there on the... All right. That's where it's done.